Go ahead and ask. If we can, okay, we started the recording. So, uh, welcome to the November, uh, actually today's the fourth, the November 4th meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. Uh, again, we have a full house at forum and every, every planning member, member present. So that's great. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please, uh, I think we all have planning board in front of our names. So the people in the, uh, out there can see who is a planning board member. We all put PB in front of our names. Uh, so before we proceed, I'm going to hand it over to Jean Gatzah. Thank you so much for, uh, providing us the virtual meeting protocols for planning board.
There we go. Thank you, David. Um. Very good. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Is it showing up correctly? Cause it looks like it's about, it's doing a half and half thing for me. And I'm not, it's supposed to do that.
It does look oddly shaped. Like, like it's too tall and not wide enough or something, but.
That's what it looks like to me, too.
It's cutting off, it's cutting off some things. Um. See. Maybe you could try sharing a full screen or something, or the whole application.
I think that'll work better. How's that?
Perfect.
Very good. Okay. Um, so with our virtual meetings, we have a set of a protocol that is adopted by the city that helps us keep our virtual meetings orderly and efficient. And the city is engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports the physical and emotional safety for community members, staff and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences and political perspectives. More about this vision and the full rules of decorum can be found on the city council webpage. Come on slide, go to the next one. There we go. The following examples of the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision, and these will be held during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epithets and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited, and this will be enforced. Participants are asked to, um, use their full name, please, um, to be unmuted to address the board. And currently only audio testimony is permitted online. So, um, for the public hearings, an open comment, no video will be allowed. When we get to the open comment or the public hearing, you can let, let us know that you would like to speak using the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen. You won't see an unmute option until, um, we adjust that setting. But once we do, once it's your turn, well, um, you'll see a way to unmute. So don't worry, that'll be there. The chat has been disabled. So if there is a question about a technical issue related to the meeting, whoops, not that one. That's for, um, that's for our other meetings. I'm gonna stop sharing. If you have a question about them, about the, the way that we're running the Zoom or when, when we're gonna do, um, open comment, or that you would like to speak and you can't find the raise hand function, you can put that in the, in the Q and A. That goes to me and Cindy and I monitor those. But the board members and staff do not monitor those. They should not be looking at the Q and A. So, but, but also please don't put questions related to the topic at hand in the Q and A. The Q and A is not part of the record and board members and staff should not be looking at that. So, just like if we were meeting in person, you can't be slipping notes to folks. So, um, please use chat or the Q and A only for technical issues. Let's see, anything else? I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jean. Um, so again, uh, we, we all need to remember not to look at the Q and A. Uh, and since chat is disabled for the public, sometimes it's okay for us to use chat if we have something technical to say to each other, like if you're having a connection problem or something, uh, but otherwise chat is not used either. Uh, so thank you, Jean, for that. Uh, so, um, with that, we'll go ahead and move into our second item on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. Uh, we have one set of minutes, uh, that Cindy sent out the October 21st. And I know I sent some, uh, some minor comments in. Uh, does anybody have any comments or would like to make a motion? All right. Well, since everybody's muted and I don't hear comments, I'll go, go ahead and make a motion to approve of the October 21st, 2021 minutes. Would anyone like to second that motion? I see Sarah's hand. So Sarah seconds. Uh, so, okay, um, let's just do a hand raised for this. All in favor of approving the, uh, October 21st, I mean, it says written. Please show by raising your hand. I see, um, I don't see Lupita's hand yet. I see Peters. Lupita, um, how is, how would you like to vote on the minutes vote? Oh, were you, you were not in the meeting, right? Can you hear me, Lupita? Okay. So would, would you like to not vote on this one? We can't hear you because you're muted.
See, I kept looking for the same thing. Muted myself instead of a muting. Sorry. I, I can vote for them, uh, but I would rather not because I usually, when I don't attend the meeting, I feel better not to.
That's fine. We, we, we absolutely accommodate not voting for minutes if you weren't in the meeting. So that if you're comfortable with that, we'll make it a six, six person, uh, vote in favor of approval of minutes. So thank you so much. All right. So with that, um, let's move into the public participation portion of our meeting. Uh, this is the, uh, time where, uh, you, the public can, uh, talk to us about anything except for items that have a public hearing. Uh, items that have a public hearing will come up later, uh, in the agenda. Uh, there are two public hearing items. One is for 1345 28th Street, which is the Millennium Hotel Project. Uh, on that site, and the other one is for ordinance 8514 on standards for oil and gas operations. If you have comments on either of those two subjects, please save them for, uh, later in the meeting when we have the public hearing after the presentations. Otherwise, any other subject is open for you to comment on, and you'll have three minutes. And what we do is we look for your hand to be raised in the attendee list. And, um, and I will then call on you and then Jean will unmute you. So at this point for general public comment, I see one hand raised and that's Lynn Seagull. And I'll go ahead and, uh, have Jean, uh, enable your ability to unmute Lynn.
Yeah, I just have to blow my nose. It's, I'm riding my bike and, and it's 56, well, it's about 45 degrees in my house all winter. I hibernate all winter. Cause I don't want to use the energy. Um, okay. Um. Okay, um. I don't want it to state the obvious here. Okay. You guys all know this. Okay. What I'm asking for is action. What we need is an integrative per capita impact on Boulder. Water, library, art, open space. Uh, you know, rec centers, everything that we use needs to be applied to each human being that gets onto one of the developments that you approve. That's self corrective. That will get us to carrying capacity. If you do that, you need to get the transportation impact. So you need to demand because you're the most important board. You all know that. You need to demand that the other boards come up. The EAB comes up with a carbon footprint for each person. And, and how that overlaps with transportation, how that overlaps with water demand, you know, gross reservoir. What did that cost us just losing that now? You know, that, that added to our deficit, right? You know, so all that needs to be considered when you're making any decision. Now I understand that you made a decision on Spruce Folsom to go up four stories on the Pearl side of the development. And apparently this was for Mecca, the, um, the, you know, hit the landmark a bull. It's not landmarked yet, but the, the owner, you know, my brother, listen to this story. My brother bought a house in 1980 for $80,000 in Martin Acres by Ash and Broadway. If you know where that is, a little past Nisk, he bought this house and he checked out for South Boulder Creek flood plain and it was not on it. So he bought the house. Then he found out at the closing that Bear Creek is in his, that was in that flood plain for that house. So he backed out, lost a couple thousand dollars, which was a lot back then. So, you know, you, you put yourself in a vulnerable position like CU South, like Fraser Meadows, and you know, he, he has to pay for it. I'm sorry to say, you know, you shouldn't be building in flood plains. And you should figure it out. You don't have mommy and daddy here to tell you, don't build in the flood plain anymore. You know, you have to go do research and figure that out yourself if you're responsible enough to buy a house. So all these things need to be considered. And that four story really shouldn't have been put there. Those guys bought that place knowing that Mecca was landmarked. That means they lose in that little section. They lose. They bought it. You know, cracker barrel story. Done. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. Um, great. So, um, I don't see any other hands up. So I'm going to do a last call for general public comment. And again, we'll be having two public comments, uh, during public hearing items. So with that, um, we'll go ahead. If I don't see any more hands, we close the general public comment period, public participation and move on to agenda item four, uh, which is discussions of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. Uh, so tonight, uh, we have one call-up item. Um, it's a standard wetlands permit, WET 2021 dash 00016, uh, replacement of a, uh, existing bridge with box culverts on Wonderland Creek. Uh, today is the final day for call-up. Um, anyone have any questions or, um, Johnny, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just went out there, uh, by bike today and looked at it. And I just have a question perhaps for, uh, Kristen Shepherd, if, if she's here. I, I can't see who's here from the city to address it. So I just wanted to confirm that, uh, you've done an analysis that, that indicates that, uh, the, the replacement, uh, will continue to pass the same flood flows that, that pass under the bridge now. And that you're not worried about debris piling up in front of the culverts to a greater degree than, than would happen under the existing bridge.
Yeah, that's a great point. So the, um, we did a flood analysis back in 2019. We actually did that before, well before the wetland permit to ensure that floodwaters would flow without causing any rises. And that analysis was, um, approved and met all criteria. So I'm comfortable with the box culverts passing the same amount of floodwaters. And as far as, um, debris goes, the, um, upstream and downstream, the planting vegetation they're proposing is similar to what's there now, which is more of a like grassy native plants. So the debris, it, it would be similar to what's in the channel at the moment. So I'm not worried about things catching on the, the sides of the box culverts because they're actually quite large. I think they're about eight feet wide. Um, so there's plenty of space for, for anything large that's coming down the creek.
And there's, there's some of box culverts of the same size upstream of there.
You know, you're right. There is box culverts upstream. I don't remember the size of them, but they're, uh, right under, um, diagonal. There's some box culverts there and there's some downstream as well that they replaced during the Wonderland Creek project.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you. I, I won't be calling it up. I just wanted to, yeah, hear your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Of course, anytime.
Thanks, Kristen. And I, I actually really enjoyed reading through this, uh, item because it just kind of really helps you understand the kind of native plants and species that are in the area and how we address those things. So it was very interesting reading. So thank you for, for the hard work on that. Any other questions or comments or anybody want to call this up? All right. Well, thanks so much. Great. So with that, um, we'll go ahead and start our public hearing items for the night. Uh, our first public hearing is a concept plan review and comment. It is, uh, for input on a proposal to demolish the existing hotel at 1345 28th Street and redevelop the property with, with three story, three, four story buildings up to 55 feet in height. Uh, the development is proposed to contain 295 residential apartments in a mix of studio, one, two, three, and four bedroom configurations of 40%, 46% parking reduction is proposed to allow for 30, 387 parking spaces or 712 would be required, uh, per zoning. Uh, the applicant intends to maintain a portion of the existing tennis facilities on the south side of the creek. Uh, this is case number LUR 2021 dash 00033. And, uh, before we start this item, I'd just like to ask the board if there's any expertise or, uh, relevant expertise or potential conflicts of interest to disclose on this item before we dive in. I don't see anybody jumping up with that. So with that, then I guess, um, I think that, um, Charles will be joining us late. So I, I can certainly turn it over directly to Sloan. Did I see your hand, John, or maybe not?
Yes, uh, I, I'd just like to say that over the last 15 years, I think I've had various conversations about the fate of a harvest house with various folks, but nothing that, uh, would, would, uh, prevent me from addressing this in a fair and objective way.
Thank you. Great. Okay. Well, um, so, um, yeah, since, uh, Charles, I don't think Charles is with us yet. So I'll just turn it, Sloan, right over to you. So while, while we'll be, uh, presenting on behalf of staff. Thank you, Sloan.
Great. Thanks for the introduction. Let me go ahead and share my presentation. Jean, if you would let me take over. It's saying you have disabled participant screen sharing.
Sorry about that, Sloan. I thought I had, we had that.
I saw something happen that said you're the co-host now. So maybe it'll work.
Okay, there we go. Great. All right. Hoping you can see that. Okay. So, um, as you described, the proposal is to redevelop the site at 1345 28th Street. The size of the property and the amount of floor area proposed requires a concept plan review under the land use code prior to application for site review. The purpose of concept plan review is to determine the general development plan for the site and to help identify key issues in advance of the site review submittal. This step is intended to give the applicant an opportunity to solicit comments and feedback from the planning board as well as the public and staff early in the development process. And there is no formal action given as part of this review. So, um, public notification was provided as required per the land use code. There were a couple, letters and emails provided in the packet and then a number came in directly to the board after, um, after the packet was posted. The 15.8 acre property is located, um, adjacent to 28th Street, south of Arapaho Avenue. Boulder Creek runs through the site. The site contains a hotel constructed originally in 1958. It also contains 15 tennis courts that were constructed originally in 1977. The courts are located on both sides of the creek and are currently used by the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center, CU Boulder Women's Tennis and some other recreational groups. The courts on the north side are, are the majority of the courts are covered by a temporary cover in the colder months. Um, the existing structure was built prior to annexation, but various not conforming reviews, special reviews, PUDs and site reviews have been conducted over the years. And the re, a new site review would essentially replace all of those. Um, in terms of historic preservation review, historic preservation staff did receive a demolition request and administratively approved it. They determined the hotel is not potentially eligible for landmark designation. Um, it is historically significant as a hub of the social scene in Boulder from the 1950s through the 80s and also as a visual landmark as you're entering the city. However, it's been significantly remodeled and had significant alterations and additions. Including the application of stucco in areas. So staff's determined it's lost much of its integrity. And, um, the historic demolition approval is conditioned upon receipts of a report or study of the historic and architectural history and documentation for the property. In terms of natural features, the site does contain a number of mature trees primarily along the creek and within the sort of central courtyard for the hotel. There are prominent views of the flatirons and foothills to the west. But the site is fully developed in an urban context. Boulder Creek serves as an urban stream corridor through the site and is also a wildlife corridor. Therefore, any development would need to be sensitive to wildlife behavior and movement along the creek. Uh, the corridor is protected by a public easement primarily over the multi-use path. And the site does contain a fish observatory and an amphitheater along the creek, which you can see in this photograph that was constructed in partnership with the city. I believe in the late 1980s. Properties impacted by the 100 year high hazard and conveyance flood zones of Boulder Creek. New parking would not be permitted within the high hazard or conveyance zones, but they are able to, um, maintain existing parking. The proposed buildings would be located outside of the high hazard, um, zone and would be elevated above the flood plain elevation. The area surrounding the creek is also considered high functioning wetlands and both the inner and outer buffer areas would, um, impact development of the site. Here you can see some contextual photos of buildings in the surrounding area. The site functions as a transition area between the high intensity commercial district along 28th Street to the north. And then the university and residential uses to the south and west. The alcove on Arapaho Shopping Center is located directly to the north, which contains a variety of retail service, restaurant uses, um, including Safeway. To the, directly to the west at 1444 Folsom is a two-story apartment building constructed around the same era. I don't know if you can see my cursor, um, as the Millennium Harvest House. There is, um, to the northwest is university housing for graduate students and families. The CU main campus is, um, located to the southwest and is easily accessible from the multi-use path. And then to the south across the creek is a congregate care facility within a, um, here we go, a nine-story tower and a couple of four-story buildings can originally constructed in 1975. Um, I believe it's the Carolan at Boulder Creek. Also across the creek is the University Village of Boulder Creek Apartments, which were constructed in 2002, which are a student housing. The apartments are dispersed in four buildings up to 53 feet in heights. And then further south are single family homes constructed in the 1950s. And there are some small scale office buildings and single family homes directly across 28th Street. It's also important to note that the area planned for the most intensive development in the city is located directly to the south along the 28th Street Frontage Road. Uh, the majority of the site is designated as transitional business on the land use map of the comprehensive plan. Desired uses in these areas are a mix of uses, including housing. There is no maximum residential dens- density under this designation. The site's also bisected by a parks designation, which contains the multi-use path. And then the area south of the creek are designated high density residential. However, the entire site is owned business transitional one. In terms of planning efforts, the project site is located, uh, the southern edge of the Boulder Valley Regional Center. Um, the area south of the creek is just outside the boundaries. However, the area of redevelopment is within the BVRC. The BVRC is defined as a high intensity regional commercial center. And the redevelopment of the site would be subject to the BVRC design guidelines as well as the transportation connection plan for the BVRC. There's also several plans that address the Boulder Creek corridor, including the Greenways Master Plan and the Boulder Creek Restoration Master Plan. The Parks and Recreation Department's also in the process of completing a, um, Boulder Creek Management Plan, which would outline improvements along the Boulder Creek Corridor. Um, as, and also including improvements adjacent to this property. The site is highly accessible with easy access to transportation facilities and a variety of destinations and services. It's well connected for bicyclists and pedestrians. As I mentioned, the Boulder Creek multi-use path runs directly through the site. The site is impacted by a second, a planned secondary street connection along the north property line. As part of the BVRC transportation plan as well as three north-south multi-use path connections to provide connectivity. And moving on to the concepts, the conceptual site design locates the buildings within that central area of the site outside of the high hazard and conveyance flood zones. The building footprints are in the same general location as the existing hotel structure. vehicular access would remain on 28th Street with two restricted access points. And the existing cross access through the neighboring property would remain to Folsom Street. You can kind of see it in this image. Um, three four-story buildings are proposed, which feature some building extensions that reach out to the creek, which those create, um, some programmed internal courtyards and walkways between the buildings. Parking is concentrated in two surface parking lots, one on the east side of the site and one on the west fronting on 28th Street. The existing multi-use path would be realigned and pulled further into the sites, which would provide better alignment with the existing bridge structure. And the plans show the existing tennis courts and accessory structures and parking to remain on the south side of the creek at this point. In terms of open space, um, the north side of the creek is proposed to be improved to create some passive and active recreational areas for residents and members of the public. The proposal includes a mix of private, semi-private and public usable open spaces. In terms of private open space, they are promote, proposing private balconies and rooftop decks. There's also some semi-public spaces, um, the form of those interior courtyards, which would be programmed with amenities like a pool, entry plazas and some in the interior space, which would have recreational amenities like a gym and coffee lounge. Um, in terms of those more public open spaces, they are showing them to be programmed, sort of reminiscent of the civic area with some open lawns facing the creek, a soft trail and, um, river beach area. Um, the, the proposed use is residential with 295 units for rent. Um, it would be designed to serve the student population and would consist of one, two, three and four bedroom units. Would also include 25,000 square feet of amenity space to serve the residents. As I mentioned, the, uh, the site plan shows the removal of the tennis courts on the north side of the creek, but, um, retaining the facilities on the south side. The applicant states that they're continuing to coordinate with the tennis facility users to accommodate usage on the south side, but, um, the details haven't been worked out at this point. In terms of parking, uh, the plan includes 387 vehicular spaces in those parking lots I, I, um, described. The preliminary estimate for required parking on the project would be 712 onsite parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms proposed. Thus, um, a 45.6% parking reduction would be required at the site review stage. Um, and I would just note at this point that staff does have concerns about the amount of, um, parking reduction proposed. Some level of reduction would be appropriate considering the population served and the location of the project. But ultimately at the site review phase, the applicant would need to demonstrate that the parking needs of the residential and, um, athletic facility users would be adequately accommodated with the proposal. The proposed buildings are four stories and approximately 55 feet in height. The buildings would be elevated above the flood plain elevation, which would be approximately three feet. The building design is contemporary with at roofs. They have been broken into separate forms to break up the mass and scale. The overall city processes required are listed on the screen. As I mentioned, the buildings exceed the permitted building height of 35 feet and three stories. So a height modification would be required at site review. Use review would also be required concurrent with site review to allow residential use on the ground floor facing the streets. And also for the athletic facility use as part of the development. Staff identified four key issues for discussion in the memo. The first key issue is whether the concept plan meets the goals, objectives and recommendations of the comprehensive plan. At this point, staff found that the proposal is consistent with policies regarding housing and a compact development pattern within the city. Policy 2.18, which is Boulder Valley Regional Center and 28th Street states that the city would preserve and enhance the BVRC as a high-intensity regional commercial center while encouraging the addition of a variety of housing types. In addition, a diversity of housing types is a core value of the comprehensive plan. There is principally a need for housing for students near the university, which the addition of 295 student apartments in close proximity to the university would be consistent with that intent. It's also important to note that student-oriented housing would also help alleviate some of the student pressure on the overall housing supply. The second key issue is whether the design meets the design guidelines for the BVRC. The proposal does appear to meet guidelines related to building design, including four-sided architecture, avoiding large blank walls and some human scaled design elements, also the use of high-quality exterior materials. There are a couple guidelines that appear to be not met with the proposal, which are related to the site layout. And creating a building forward design and locating parking behind the building. So those guidelines are shown on the screen. Staff does acknowledge that the ability to locate buildings along 28th Streets restricted by the floodplain. However, we would ask that the applicant consider sort of emphasizing the 28th Street frontage, locating active common open spaces on that frontage as well as the secondary street on the north side. Also, just reducing the visual impacts of that surface parking along 28th Street will be important at the site review phase. The next key issue is whether the height, mass and scale of the proposed buildings are compatible with the character of the area. As I mentioned, a height modification would be required at the site review stage. They are eligible for such a request and would be subject to the community benefit requirements. Since there would be floor area above that third story restriction. And under this, the community benefits standards that additional floor area would be used to determine the required number of affordable residential units as part of inclusionary housing. So that would either be onsite affordable or the cash and lieu requirements. So in terms of the area, the surrounding built context is eclectic. As I mentioned, the BVRC to the north is very intensive. Newer developments to the south are also built at a higher intensity and scale. That carlon at Boulder Creek Congregate Care Facility is approximately 80 feet in height and built up to nine stories. These photographs are taken from the site. So this is this parking lot is the parking that serves the tennis use. And then the shows from the site, the covered tennis courts and the carlon in the distance. Also, those university village apartments are up to 53 feet in height. So do the proximity of these developments and also proximity to the BVRC. The heights would not be an anomaly and would add to a variety of heights in the area. However, the design and site plan would be important at the site review phase to show that they are consistent with the overall context. And then the last key issue is whether the proposed open space is appropriate in design, character and usability. Based on the concept provided, the design of those open spaces would be paramount in meeting the site review criteria. Primarily because the allowable density and intensity of development in the BT1 district is determined by the provision of usable open space. Staff would like to acknowledge the comprehensive approach to planning those more public open spaces along the creek. But would also like to note that managing that public space would have some challenges and there needs to be some consideration for how more private spaces would be defined for the public. So the intent of those public spaces is to be shared with residents, visitors and in some cases, the public. And given that the design is very reminiscent of a public park, it will be important for the applicant to consider how these areas will be managed and staff recommends ongoing coordination with the Parks and Recreation, Greenways, Open Space and Planning Departments on the proposed design and management of such areas. And that covers my presentation. I'm always happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Great. So I see Georgie is unmuted. So we'll go ahead and open it up to questions from the board. You want to kick?
Yeah. My question is in regards to the city's overall view and goals around the frontage on 28th Street. Being that it's the the main corridor that a lot of people use as the gateway to Boulder. Could you expand? Is there a, is there a is there an overall master plan or idea around that corridor? And how the interaction of a space like this would would present itself?
Sure. So there isn't a plan specific to this site. There is for the frontage road to the south. So I think in terms of overall planning, it would just be the comprehensive plan and the BVRC guidelines. There's nothing specific for this portion of the city.
Okay, let's go with Peter next.
I have a follow-up. Georgie, I couldn't agree more about this as a topic, although I think that's why I brought it up, but I wanted to get a clarification from staff. 28th and Arapaho. Right? There's not a street frontage plan for that intersection that would encompass what we're looking at here.
And if you're talking about like an area plan, there is not, there's the site review criteria, which talk about interaction between development and the street. They would be required to meet that. I think what makes this unique is that they are restricted in terms of the floodplain regulations.
And just to be clear on that, that's because there's a high hazard and conveyance zone on the existing parking lot area, which makes it impossible to do something new other than parking there and then perhaps some additional you know, landscaping and things to try to de-emphasize its visual impact.
That's correct. They're not able to put any structures in that area.
Any other questions of on 28th Street frontage or anything else? John?
Yeah, my question isn't dealing with 28th Street frontage, but it's might be interested in the city's regulations or guidelines or desires with respect to the pedestrian path and the river corridor. And what sort of considerations and limitations we should be aware of in this respect?
John, are you referring to like that soft surface path?
Well, I'm referring to the existing bike path, multi-use path along there. And also what happens along the creek banks itself? And how wide the city's interests are felt to to extend.
Sure. So in terms of the multi-use path, we are in support of that realignment currently. The turn from the bridge onto the existing path is very abrupt. So we do support that realignment. In terms of improvements within the creek bed, I am there. At this point, staff's identified that there is some maintenance and improvements necessary. Very, but I don't know if we've exactly determined what those would be, and that might be part of that Parks and Recreation management plan that's ongoing right now. And there was another part to that question that I'm blanking on. Oh, what the extent of our interests are. There is an existing easement that covers the creek. I I'm not sure if that, you know, if that extent would change as part of this review, but I think generally that would define what the city's interests are along the creek.
So, so we don't know how wide the easement is along the creek?
We do know. I mean, it's an existing easement, but I can imagine as part of this review that there might be changes necessary to that easement or just that's not clear at this point. So if you have any concerns that we should be aware of, this would be the point to identify those.
Okay, if I can just, David, if I can just follow up.
Sure, I had similar questions. So you're going right down the path I was gonna.
Yeah, I would like to mark that as a concern to staff, just to learn what the existing easement is and what staff feels it should be. Then a final question is understanding the term of semi-public open space. What does that mean? Does that give the owner the right to exclude the public or or I'm unclear about what that means.
Sure. So what I'm referring to in my presentation in the memo and semi-public would be areas of the sites that are very clearly intended for residents not to be used by a member of the public just walking through. I would point out that the entire site is private property. So they, you know, hypothetically have the right to restrict public use across the site. But the way that it's currently designed is that the areas along the site it would be more public in usage, open to the public, you know, traveling along the multi-use path, whereas you move north into the residential portion of the site, it would be clear to users that this is intended just for residents or visitors of the residence residential development. Does that make sense?
Well, I understand the, you know, the concept, of course, the devil's in the details. But thank you. I'll have more questions, but maybe somebody else wants to go now.
Well, just to tag on to Johnson's, I was interested also, which is with regards to the public easement. Then, then, once we have a public easement, activities that take place on the public easement are done in the public realm and as a result, the private property owners are not legally, you know, at risk for injuries and things like that that happen on the public easement and stuff like that, because there's some pretty interesting recreational things that happen currently in that stretch of of the creek. So I was just kind of curious whether currently, you know, those are just kind of all considered activities in the public realm, and that would be what we would be going for in a future easement.
Well, yeah, Hella, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, there. So the easement that's there is pretty unique. I I haven't seen a similar easement anywhere in the city, but there is one easement that's for the multi-use path that that includes, I think, public access. And then there's also an easement to the city that is described as for recreation purposes on the banks and bed of Boulder Creek. And and there are some, there's some more descriptions associated with that. I don't have it pulled up right now. It it kind of runs along, the creek is a little bit wider in that area of the fish observatory. I assume the fish observatory is in it. Although I don't think I've actually seen a survey of the actual easement area. So we'll have to find that out. I can tell you that this large green space that is reminiscent of the civic area. A large part of that is not within that existing easement area.
Thank you.
If you have another question.
Peter, go ahead.
Well, the screen share was up and I was going to just suggest that we look at a site plan while it was up, which she's now doing, which I was going to propose page 10 of 87. If not related to what we're just talking about, but in general, that was it.
Thanks.
On the screen was, was it?
Sorry, I'm having some tech issues, but I'll try and bring up the easement.
Great. While you're doing that, I'll go ahead and let Lisa jump in.
Yeah, I was just hoping there is the, and I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but but of the things that it looked like the concept review might not meet. Structured parking was another thing that jumped out at me on that site. So I was just curious as currently, and I know we're very early on, but as currently conceived of, is any of the parking underground or above ground? And it's near the creek, so perhaps undergrounding is not very easy. Or is it all surface?
Just currently all surface parking.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Great. Sarah, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. I want to follow up on Lisa's. So this is obviously a very difficult parcel because of the floodplain issues. And I understand in the, in the 500-year floodplain, they can't build new structures even if, so my question is actually, is that correct? If it's a parking structure, if it's a sort of relatively open parking structure? That's still the, there's no history in Boulder of off of a variance for just a parking structure in a high, high 500-year floodplain.
I'm sorry, you mean high hazard or? 500-year, okay.
Yeah, because that's, that's what surrounds the, they have built literally on the all of the square footage that is in the 100-year flood zone and they've, I mean, so I'm asking about the 500-year flood zone.
So there, there are restrictions, restrictions in the 500-year. My understanding is unless you're a critical facility. So the restrictions that are applicable in this case are the conveyance and high hazard zones. That's what you're showing sort of surrounding that little hole in the middle of the site. They would not be able to build a parking structure in that that area. They could integrate it into their buildings that they're proposing.
Can I, I had a couple more questions. The 55-foot height proposed, does that include the three-foot elevation above floodplain or is that 55 plus three?
No, it does include it. So that's the three feet and then the four stories of building.
And I had one more question, which is, are there any other buildings with this height and massing along the creek? Because the building you show that's across the way on the south side is further back. And I'm sure we all walk this creek a lot, the creek path a lot. I can't recall any buildings quite this big along the creek path. Are there any others that you could point to?
You know, I can't think of any off the top of my head and I didn't think to look. So I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Anyone else want to jump in now? Go ahead.
I had a question in light of the recent fire that we had in Boulder. These buildings seem pretty large and also not terribly porous on how. So I guess my question, and I don't know if you're able to answer, but if you're not, maybe it's something we could understand a little better is I want to make sure that our fire department could even accommodate buildings like this, the way they're they're sited.
Um, well, what I, I'm not an expert, but what I would say is any development proposal is reviewed by our fire marshal, Dave Lowry. He has reviewed this for access and has determined that this would be sufficient. And he'll continue to review into the site review phase. And I would also say that the building code has probably changed pretty significantly since that other structure was built that had the fire, but I'm not an expert on that.
No, thanks. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Georgie. And I see, Sarah, you have your hand up.
I do. Does anyone else want to go before I ask my second round of questions?
Well, I, I'm asked, I've asked, and I think Peter, did you have anything or I think everyone else has asked. So go ahead. Let's go to your second round.
All right. So I have a couple of questions that have to do with the tennis courts. And I want to understand, I have two questions. And I want to understand, I have two questions about the tennis courts, the first is. Is the applicant proposing to eliminate the north, the tennis courts on the north side in order to meet their open space requirements? Is that kind of what's happening here?
Um, I don't believe it's to meet the open space necessarily, their, their actual building is located in the area. Of the courts and their surface parking, so they, they are developing in that area.
Okay, so this is for them to maximize their development footprint, not for the open space, okay, that's helpful to know. And then on page ninety-six of the packet, the staff has reached the conclusion that those tennis courts are outdoor entertainment. Which. Affects how they are reviewed. And I actually typed it out, since the tennis operations would be open to the public, the use would be considered outdoor entertainment in the land use code, which requires a use review. The outdoor recreation use would be considered as part of the same application. I'm, my own sense is that the tennis courts are, actually fall more under in the use table. Parks and Recreation Uses or Indoor Recreation or Athletic Facilities, which, which is an allowed use in the BT1 Zone, and I'm really curious how staff. Reach the conclusion that it's outdoor entertainment versus something recreation or athletic, since it's tennis.
Yeah, I mean, I, what I would say, the terminology is a little awkward or outdated. The parks and recreation use is only for public uses, so it can't meet that definition, and then it, it. Wouldn't be indoors, so we can't, we can't consider it an indoor recreation use. That, that's how it fits there, and it's funny, if you go back on the history of the site. We have done another use review, and we considered it something similar as to outdoor entertainment. But it is noted, that is, the terminology is a little awkward.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Well, just to tag along to that. That question, since it's tennis court related, we've seen a lot of interest from the public in this specifically because of the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center's. Agreement with the current property owner and the benefits, the benefits that they, they see from this, and. Is there a role that the city plays in, in trying to see where, where a particular recreational community like the tennis community gets impacted by the loss of facilities? If private interests don't, don't preserve those, I, I, I think it would be interesting for the public to hear. Hear a comment on that, if you have, if you can share any, anything about any, any levers that the city has to look at that, and whether we can even look. At, at how we accommodate tennis across the city.
Right, I mean, I, I don't think that there's anything specific in the site review criteria that speak to removing. A recreational use. And I think it, it would probably be a good question. For the applicant, as well as what their plans are, I think in terms of citywide, I think our Parks and Recreation Department. Generally, you know, does studies of what's, what. These are desired or necessary. So as part of a citywide planning effort, they would probably be looking at tennis facilities, but not specific to. A certain site like this.
Thank you, Sloan, and yeah, I, I would like to ask a similar question of the applicant. Okay, other questions, Peter, and then Lupita, and then John.
Thank you, Sloan, I'm looking at figure twenty-one on page thirty of eighty-seven. And it brought up a question for me that. I'd rather ask you instead of asking the applicant. Is it the city's position now that? Solar production is let best left to our utility and solar farms? Or not, because I don't see any reference in the packet anywhere, if my word search was correct on the word energy or sustainability once. And it's such a big site, and the opportunity is so great here for some real. Energy goals on top of our city goals, whether it be. I'm just curious about that, before I go deeper, it has to, there has to be a reason why it wasn't mentioned anywhere in the packet.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that concept plan, we just don't get that level of detail. Generally. So I, I'm sure that they've. Been doing their own analysis on how they're going to meet the energy code and potentially exceed it, I would say that the. The buildings are designed to accommodate quite a bit of solar on the rooftops, but not beyond that, so I just don't think we have that level of detail at this point.
Okay. Great, Lupita? And then John, and then I think Lisa.
Yeah, my question has to do with who does get to use a facility as we stand right now, we did get quite. Quite a bit of correspondence from the public regarding, you know, the use of the. Entertainment facilities outdoor that happen to be indoor. And that athletics that don't qualify us, I mean. Sloan called it, you know, awkward, I call it. Nonsense, um, there's gotta be something that needs to be fixed here, obviously, something's wrong, needs to be fixed, but. I'm. More concerned about who gets to use the facilities, is it really providing a service to the entire community, or is it a very reduced number of people? Who can use these facilities? And therefore, whatever is going to be eliminated, which we hope won't be, really gonna affect a very small number of people. I, I, because we do have facilities around the city, but this particular set is because it's an indoors. Presumably provides. Space to do things during the severe winters that we have. And, you know, speaking from somebody who appreciates having indoor soccer. Pre-pandemic, where children get to do active things, when most of the time you can't do it. I'm wondering if, if there is some sort of information we can gather or gain. From the applicant of the city in terms of the actual usage, you know, what portion of our community gets to use it and who can afford it?
So I, I'm not sure I have a great answer to that, I do think. It's important to note that, yes, I, I am saying it's open to the public, but it is privately managed. You either have, you have to be part of one of those organizations who use it, so I, I'm not aware of, you know, what their. The cost of membership or the enrollment is, that would be a good question for them. I would know also, there is some other sort of accessory uses in those. Buildings that are adjacent, I think there's a small daycare, so there is some other sort of. Small accessory uses that would be open to the public as well.
Okay, thank you, Lupita, John, and then Lisa. Yeah, thank you. One of the things that, that you indicated in the report was that this did not qualify for, for landmarking or some sort of historic preservation. The, the main original building. And I, I understand that, that Sarah had asked some, for some more detail about that. Could you give that to us, the details? Of why it doesn't qualify?
Sure, so unfortunately, our historic preservation staff wasn't available to attend tonight, but they, they provided those details on the slide that I was showing. Essentially, that they did numerous site visits and a lot of research and just determine that. Due to the significant amount of. Alterations and remodeling that was done, that it's lost much of its integrity, and that's why they issued that administrative. That administrative demolition. Approval. So if you want additional detail, I'm happy to ask them to email it to the board following this hearing.
Well, I think that would be interesting. Just to, to follow up on a quick additional question, David, if I may. I'm looking at figure nineteen, which shows the wetlands, you know, high functioning wetlands, inner buffer and outer buffer. Along the creek, and I'm trying to see how that relates to what is being proposed in this. That we're dealing with tonight, can you, and, and there are no dimensions associated with the inner buffer and outer buffer and so on, so it's difficult to see how that. Relates to, to the proposal, is there any way you can describe in how that has been considered?
Sure, so, um, again, I think we're pretty conceptual at this level, so I don't know, I don't have a plan showing. The buildings in relation to the buffers, but I would say that the building itself is located outside the buffers. They likely, some of the open space in the multi-use path would be located within the buffers, but. They would be required at site review to show that they meet all of the wetland restrictions. So if you have a specific concern, this would be the time to comment on it.
Okay, well, I guess I, I will have a comment when the time comes, thank you. That'll be key issue four, I think, Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, I think both of these may be things that you also choose to pitch to the applicant, Sloan, so feel free to weigh in from a staff perspective, but I may ask them again. I just wanted to confirm that as currently proposed with the courts that we preserved south of the creek. That those are not planned to have a bubble or perhaps cannot accommodate a bubble to be year-round, could you clarify that?
Yeah, that's correct, because they are within the high hazard and conveyance zones, they wouldn't be, they're not allowed to build any structure.
Eligible, okay. And then I wanted to follow up on something that you mentioned that also jumped out to me as I was reading through the plan, is, is the current intent to preserve space for the existing daycare? In the new development, or has that not been considered?
Um, you know, it wasn't included in the application materials, so I'm not sure what the plan is, that would be a good question for the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Sloan.
Thank you, yeah, and I guess. If, if there aren't more questions for staff, we could move on to the applicant presentation, but are there more questions, go ahead, John? Yeah, just real quickly, with respect to the parking, are there any city regulations or requirements? That deal with whether it would be bundled or unbundled?
There are no requirements, it's often part of their transportation demand management plan. So it's possible that they're considering that, I don't know at this point. That would be a question for the applicant.
Could be required through, through the site review criteria.
It could be, right.
Thank you. Great. Okay, well, it seems like we're kind of wrapping up the questions for Sloan, thank you so much for. For those great, those answers, and I think we had, we'll probably have a few more for the applicant. So just for the public, once we get done with the applicant presentation, we'll be opening it up for public comments, so that, that will still be at least twenty minutes away, I would guess. Just for people, people's planning purposes, so with that, we have with us, I think, Jason Dornbos. Jason, will you be kicking us off for Danica, or? I see you, and you, and Rob is here.
Yeah, Rob will be starting us off, thank you very much.
Okay, great, we'll, we'll turn it over to Rob Turk, then, thank you for being with us tonight.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody, my name is Rob Turk, I am a developer with Landmark Properties. And first of all, I want to thank all of you, the members of the board, for your time this evening, as well as Sloan for her presentation. We look forward to hearing more of your comments about this exciting project, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have about it, so. Tonight, we're supported by a full project team, including our architect, Shears Atkins Rockmore, our engineering firm, JVA, our landscape architect, Wink Associates. Floodplain engineers, Anderson Consulting engineers, and entitlement consultants from Tressle Strategy Group, and they as well will be happy to answer any of your questions. From my side, I'm joined by Andrew Costas and Jason Dornbos with Landmark, so. Our firm, Landmark Properties, we were founded in two thousand and three, we have a long and established track record of developing, constructing. And managing high-quality student housing projects in markets like Berkeley, California, Seattle, Washington, and Austin, Texas. We have vast experience in the student housing space with more than fifty thousand beds under management, and look forward to adding this project to our long-term hold portfolio. But before we get any further, I'd like to mention our local consultant team again, and thank them for their efforts on the project to date. And although Landmark is not local to the Boulder area, we've taken careful steps to assemble a team of consultants that are. We operate in many markets around the country and understand the importance of bringing local companies and their employees into the fold on all of our projects. To educate us about their cities and to help respond to the unique challenges that each development faces. We're very excited about this opportunity, opportunity to work with the community of Boulder, and are eager to deliver a project that not only benefits our residents, but also the larger community as well. So again, thank you for the time, and at this point, I will hand it all to Danica Powell with Tressle Strategy Group.
Hi there, good evening, I'm Danica Powell with Tressle Strategy Group. As you know, our project's located at thirteen forty-five Twenty-Eighth Street, just south of the Safeway, and adjacent to Boulder Creek. The Millennium Hotel was developed in nineteen fifty-nine under the Hilton Harvest House PUD, and through the years, there have been many changes, additions, uses, and renovations to the site since then. We see this transformation from a nineteen fifties hotel to student housing. As a great transformation for the community of Boulder, it's proximate to CU Boulder, Boulder Creek, and. Twenty-Ninth Shopping Center, and also the Safeway Shopping Center, it would be a perfect use for students that need housing in Boulder, who also. Wouldn't need to commute to school or in and out of Boulder. Next slide. As Sloan mentioned, the Millennium Harvest House was constructed in the fifties and has many alterations, we recognize that this has an important. History in Boulder, I'm sure many of us have spent a Friday afternoon at the Friday Afternoon Club, or even prior to that. People like Scott Carpenter, the NASA astronaut, who was a Boulder native, came here after. He went to space and had his party at the Millennium Hotel, and many other things took place here, we recognize the importance of this history. It also is very challenging to keep these buildings, they're partially in the high hazard floodplain, they have. Fallen into some disrepair, and being able to floodproof them inside the high hazard floodplain is virtually impossible, so we. We take this seriously, so we are writing a social history of the site that we'll be happy to share with you at site review as we are working with a historian. To document everything that happened on the site, as it was a very important social history. And we intend to honor the history of this beautiful, important place as we commission that historic report, next slide. So the site has a great location on Boulder Creek, it hasn't seen improvements in many years, and we think we can really work with the city of Boulder to. Really improve the Boulder Creek path along the site, our landscape architect will talk in detail about those improvements, that one of those is really moving. The multi-use path away from the creek bank to allow more access, and also more restoration and maintenance for the creek path, all of which are high priorities for the city. Beyond its social history, the site has unique ties to Frederick La Omsted, who had. A vision and wrote a plan about all the, the creeks and drainage ways and ditches throughout Boulder. He had a vision in that original planning to purchase both sides of Boulder Creek for public recreation, and that's how we've enjoyed it today, and the site has the. Ability to own both sides of the creek, to really look at the site holistically, and not as just the north or south side of Boulder Creek. We're excited for the tradition to continue with new vibrant improvements, and we think this will be a great public space. That will align itself with a string of pearls of all the great other public spaces along Boulder Creek, and complement the civic center. And also improve the safety of the multi-use path in this location. I know that you've brought up tennis, and we, I think we have, are happy to discuss that. It, the tennis courts are all located in the high hazard floodplain, including the bubble, which is an indoor, it's a seasonal bubble. We have met with the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center and are working with them, we are, did propose keeping seven of the fifteen courts, so those seven courts are on the south side of the creek. We understand that having an indoor facility is very important to the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center, we are limited on this site, though, by providing. A indoor facility because it is in the high hazard flood area, so it is a challenge, and we have tried to compromise by providing some tennis courts and also. Creating more open space for the public to enjoy and recreate, and, and we're happy to answer more questions about that if you have them. Of note, this is the first non-appendix J project to work with the community benefit program, so as we are. So as we are um asking for additional bonus floor area and height on this site beyond three stories. Um we also have estimated the cash and lieu for this project would generate approximately fifteen million dollars for the city's affordable housing fund. Um we all acknowledge that we have a need for student housing and capacity, and there's challenges with housing, especially on the hill. And this um large redevelopment, very close to CU and close to transit, will support the market's need for student housing. And create a quality development project in the Boulder Valley Regional Center. The site is very close to downtown, shopping, transit, and um Highway thirty-six. And it has a great new bridge that crosses over Boulder Creek to connect directly into CU Boulder. And so we think it would provide beautiful housing for existing students close to campus. Next slide. From a multimodal standpoint, we already have great connections in the site, and we will enhance them through a new north-south connection through the middle of the site. Which will connect with the um existing path that kind of goes through the shopping center next to Flower Child. And continues on to Arapaho. And we also have an existing multi-use path on the west edge of our property, which we will align with Boulder Creek. And as we mentioned, we will realign the Boulder Creek path and widen it to make it safer and um a better connection for the community. Um we will be looking for a um Boulder Valley Regional Center Transportation Connections Plan Amendment. To move the alignment of this north-south connection. It was aligned to go around the hotel. And since we now have the opportunity to align that path with the existing path. We're um going to propose moving it to a new location, just a little bit to the east. Our parking reduction, we believe, is supported by the market, by um other research we've done in the community. It also applies some principles. It will be shared, unbundled, managed, and paid. Um students will pay for their parking separate from rent because the management will be um through leases with parents and students together. We can um require vehicles to be registered. Um and and Rob and Andrew are here to talk about what they've done in other college communities to reduce and minimize and eliminate the impact. Of students from parking in neighborhoods through agreements with neighbors, towing programs, registering vehicles, et cetera. So in this case, we believe this parking reduction would be supported because of its proximity to the university. Now I'm going to pass it off to Chris Shears from um Shears Atkins Rockmore to talk about the architecture and site planning.
Thank you, Danica, and good evening. As a member of CU's Systemwide Design Review Board. Uh I've been involved in the review of CU's new thirty-year master plan. Context plan illustrates that plan's recommendation for future housing north of Boulder Creek, as you can see with the orange building. Uh buildings in the in the plan. Um our proposed student housing continues this development pattern, locating housing adjacent to Boulder Creek's multi-use path. And in close proximity to the campus. It's an easy walk or ride to campus. Next slide. Proposed concept is a student residential village of about sixteen acres with two hundred and ninety-five residences. And associated common areas oriented to Boulder Creek and with a significant amount of open space. The eight diagrams shown shown here uh communicate our thought process resulting in. You say buildings uh with landscape courtyards facing the creek, mass reduction facing the creek. And north-south connections, including an activated connection aligned with the pedestrian opening to the shopping center to the north next to Safeway. Uh this primary connection and generally the location of this project provides easy walking access. To the Twenty-Ninth Street Safeway, McGeckins, and of course, Boulder's favorite student diner, The Village Cafe. Some of you have heard me say this before on other projects such as Pearl West, Hill Hotel, and Macy's. But I want to emphasize that this is a conceptual design, a concept design. Uh we are only communicating the general form of the buildings and certainly not the architectural expression. Following the review this evening, uh we will further thoroughly develop the form and architectural expression. And of course, we'll be back to see you during site review. Eddie?
Thanks, Chris. Project has been shaped by Boulder Creek in many ways, both vertically and horizontally, as Sloane has mentioned. In responding to the flooding zones, the buildable footprint is a curvilinear island set back from the majority of the property lines. This has created a natural separation of the project from the creek and allowed us to shape great and public amenity space. That will always be open and undeveloped due to the flood zones. We also can't build directly adjacent to Twenty-Eighth Street because of the restriction. And have located our project as close as possible to help sh- shape the streetscape. And are closer to Twenty-Eighth than the current Millennium Hotel. Because of the limited available buildable site, the existing hotel and the proposed projects share much of the same footprint. The floodplain has also shaped the building height, with residential use having to be over three feet from the highest grade height to avoid flood risk. Averaging five to seven feet from bridge throughout. This has raised all three buildings. The current hotel does not follow this recent requirement, and the floors are aggravated. Next, thank you. The circulation on the project is bike and pedestrian friendly. North-south connections of the site are important, and we really relocated them from the comprehensive plan. The proposed plan links Boulder Creek to the Safeway Shopping Center along Arapaho. This creates a safe, easy way for students to run errands without the use of a car. Another circulation element is our relocation of the multi-use path off of the creek, as Sloane's mentioned. This allows better engagement to the creek for pedestrians. It moves bike off bikes off the pathway with a smoother connection to the bridge. With the current tight turn. These improvements also help strengthen the multi-use paths' connection to the trail system. Now Greg from Wink will review how the site shapes landscape.
Thank you, and so much has been said. Sloane was so thorough, and and Danica talked a lot about the open space in the trail that I can be very quick, given our time. Um I will point out a few things. Just to clarify, I don't believe all the tennis courts on the north side are being removed for building density. Um five of them, five of the eight on the north side are actually where the open space is. So a lot of them, these are being removed to create a more usable and holistic open space. Uh that can be used by the entire community. I will point out, in addition to the park spaces, it's labeled their set the label seventeen. We will be providing water quality treatment, stormwater quality treatment as part of this project. And this is a wonderful way to add repair and landscape to the corridor and meet some of the other natural area objectives. Um as the team mentioned, we are providing the connection to the shopping center to the north. Uh and this will be um uh what would be a publicly accessible uh throughway. Um to get from the south to the north of the project. Next slide. Uh this is an image you've seen on the, sorry, on the the uh you're seeing the relocated bike path. Uh the qualities of the open space to the left there would be um the water quality landscape. And you know, just to to highlight some of the semi-public open space, you can see how the development is elevated slightly above the park. And this would be that semi-public private zone that you would understand that beyond those steps. You begin to enter what would be the private courtyards of the residences. This is a view from the bridge. We would look to create spaces where we could enjoy the creek. Well, as well as following your lead on the restoration objectives of the floodplain as well. And then this is the area that we're calling the River Lawn and the the River Beach. This is a lawn amphitheater that really opens up. Uh to where currently you have the the Fish Observatory um now. So we think this is a wonderful space to see and get down to uh the creek. Next slide. I think that's it.
Entering the site from Twenty-Eighth Street, the project begins with a classy one-story lobby and leasing area in Building One. This is part of our effort to provide activation and transparency to the Twenty-Eighth Street frontage. Where we don't feel the code-required retail is appropriate for the site condition. As you move down the multi-use path, you're flanked by the lobby on the left and the study space at the adjacent building two on the right. Beyond, there is a clubhouse with coffee bar and a fitness center facing the creek. Building two on the right includes units with stoops engaging the path. The building's height dropped down from four to three stories as you move closer to the creek and opens up onto the landscape areas that Greg has described. As Chris mentioned, at this stage, the project does not show materials and is schematic. We are focusing right now on overall relationships to the creek and paths and starting to break up the building masses with balconies. The courtyards create a rhythm as you walk along the wood path. This provides ample south-facing solar access to the courtyards. There is also secondary north-south connection points between the building entries and the creek. As we move forward and study materials and add more detail, we will work to differentiate the buildings and help them have their own character. That is distinct, dignified, and appropriate to the Boulder context. Next up, we'll have Danica speaking to the building heights.
Great, thank you. And this is our last slide, so thank you very much. So as we mentioned, we're asking for a height variance um for several reasons. One, the building footprint is very located and compact within the overall site. Um and is limited to less than fifty percent of the site. We have a slope that's happening across the site, so its height is measured. You're also accounting for that loss in grade. And we are floodproofing flood elevating these buildings above the finished um flood elevation, which results in approximately three-foot building height loss. Um the buildings are three to four um stories. The current hotel is sixty feet um tall. And as as we measure height by today's standards, and it's five stories uh or four to four or five stories. There's two hundred and fourteen hotel rooms, um zero residential units. Today, we're proposing two hundred and ninety-five. The building square footage will go slightly down from five hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet to four hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So that's a uh net decrease in over a hundred thousand square feet. Um today, there is a parking reduction on site of approximately forty-two percent. And our parking reduction is at forty-five point six percent, which we believe will um adequately serve the needs of the student community. And we're happy to provide examples of other student housing projects that have recently been approved or have been approved many years ago. And where we've studied what the actual utilization rates are and um you know, what the original parking reduction was. So we feel this is the right place to do a parking reduction to support the transit goals of the community. As well as actually provide these um significant housing at the site. So again, I mentioned, we will um participate in additional cash and lieu program through the bonus floor area, which results in almost fifteen million dollars. In cash and lieu for the city's affordable housing program. And that's it for now. I know you have lots of questions, so we'll be happy to answer them as um you request. So thank you very much for listening to our presentation.
Thank you, uh Danica and the entire team. Uh um very informative. And thank you also for sticking within the fifteen-minute limit. We forgot forgot to put up a timer, so we were kind of watching in the background. So I appreciate that. I I usually I ask if that's going to be enough time. So uh with that, I'll go ahead and let the board start asking questions. We'll probably need to take a break in a few minutes. But let's go ahead and start the questions and see how long we go. Peter, you want to start us off?
Sure, I have a comment for Hella. Hi, Hella. In keeping with our precedent established uh by Harmon, I didn't understand that Wink was on the team. I'm familiar with Wink's work and collaborate from time to time on projects. Uh nothing in Boulder, and I have no financial relationship with them. And uh that does not prevent me from discharging my duties tonight as a board member for this concept plan.
Uh are you, sorry, are you asking me if that prevents you from participating?
It does not. I'm just letting you know that it does not.
And you're just to confirm, you do not have a contractual relationship with that party?
That's correct.
And you can be fair and impartial in providing comments tonight?
Certainly can.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh Sarah, go ahead.
Got to unmute. Um so I was interested by that last uh chart. Sorry, something's going wrong with my computer. Um that uh this is a fat hundred and ten thousand square feet less than uh the current building. Which makes me, which raises a question for me about why not use the same footprint? Or something near the same footprint as the current building, rather than creating these three very large. Um uh buildings that have some issues certainly related to parking and to these inner courtyards.
So I'll take the non-architectural approach, then I'll pass it on to um Chris and Katie. So as I mentioned, the existing building is in, parts of it are in the high-hazard floodplain, which you cannot floodproof. Um so and it would be difficult to keep the building if.
I wasn't asking about keeping the building. I was asking about using the same footprint.
So that um is just is a is a very old, yeah, I guess, type of footprint. I'll let the architect answer that. The other issue is probably why they have more square footage is this floor-tofloors are very short. And so you have five stories within that footprint, which creates more square footage. We're only proposing three to four stories. So it it and I'll pass it on to you, Chris and Katie, to talk about why we wouldn't put the building in the existing footprint today.
Yes, well, I think really Danica answered the question, but fundamentally, the uh the building, one of the buildings, the major building is five floors. So uh we're trying to limit our height uh for the project. Therefore, we're spreading uh the project out more.
Okay. I I don't I don't know if we've answered your question, but we're also trying to move the building out of the floodplain and out of the high-hazard zone. And also trying to create a residential form, which has corridors, and we want to create private open space. And a different, just a different residential type form, which is very different than the semi-circular hotel-type development. Which was the result of many additions over many years.
Okay, thank you.
All right. More questions for the applicant? John?
Yeah, I'd I'd like to uh understand the the applicant's uh understanding of what semi-public open space is. Uh how that pertains to whether the public can access it and use it or not.
Sure, I mean, similar, John, to many other projects, we've seen that the site will be accessible to the general public. The the areas we talked about, the civic lawn and the multi-use path, um it won't be fenced off. It will be maintained by the property owner. And it will have, you know, accessibility. It is not being proposed to be dedicated to the public. That is not a standard that we. Have seen in development projects, so very similar to the Hill Hotel or Rev, where it's maintained as accessible open space for the general public. And then there will be some private open space. But but that was our main design driver, was to create this great civic lawn for the community as part of this redevelopment.
Well, uh if I can just uh follow up on that. So I understand that the big lawn close to the Boulder Creek is intended not to be. Is intended to be accessible to the public, but the uh the courtyards and the paths going to the north from there. Uh you've indicated that a portion of that would be semi-public, which is, you know, there for the water quality. Improvement from stormwater and so on. And then another portion, the the courtyards themselves are intended. To be private, completely private. Um and it's that semi-public category between the the lawn and the buildings. That I'm trying to understand what your intentions are there.
Sure. Well, there's, I think there's three main types, as you've identified. There's pure public, so that's where we have public access easements along the creek and the corridor. The Boulder Creek path would have a multi-use path, public access easement. The path, two paths going north and south through our property would have public access easements on them and would be dedicated to the city. And then we have, you know, open areas that aren't fenced and that are open for the public to enjoy, that would be maintained by the property. And then we have enclosed areas because the code also requires there to be private open space for the residents that live on this property. So that they actually have their own protected private space to enjoy. Um so we're trying to balance those three tiers of purely public, open to the public, and then private to people that live there.
Okay, just to follow up, so then the you say dedicated to the public. That means you would transfer ownership to the city or you would maintain it for the benefit of public with public access?
So there is a public access easement now along the, it's figure twenty in your staff report. So that easement is already there and we would, there's also an access easement on the multi use path on the west side of the property. We would be dedicated a new access easement. But typically in projects like this, you don't dedicate the property to the city. You it's you dedicate a public access easement over the property for the enjoyment of the public.
Okay, you you just said the word dedicate. So that's why I wanted to clarify that.
Sorry, I meant an easement, not right away.
Okay, and and the banks of the creek would continue to be fully available to the public without restriction. Because there was also some mention of improvement of the riverbanks for the benefit of the residents. And so it's good to to be clear about that as well.
So on figure 20 of the packet, it shows that recreation easement that's already in place and it's on both sides of the bank. And it also follows the like PKO area. And so that would continue to be there. Now, we will be working very closely with open space, parks and rack, flood and urban drainage to make sure and balance all the interests. So I I don't know if we'll have stairs, you know, and big beaches will have some will be riparian, some will be restored, some will have trees, you know, so we have to balance that. But right now it all would be public. And then it's actually privately maintained at the moment. So it's a public access easement with private maintenance. But but we'll be looking at that through the site review. You know, there's a lot of people interested in in the creek and the banks of the creek.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, John. Great questions. Lisa?
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask a clarifying question or maybe get it right into the record. So regarding the five courts on the north side of the creek that currently are covered by a bubble for a portion of the winter months. So I want to make sure I understand correctly. So are you saying that by pulling a new permit or by doing a new PUD or whatever we're doing on the site, that that precludes keeping the bubble up even on the north side? Or what what is the reason, besides the fact that you want to maximize the space and develop it the way you want to? What is the reason for not keeping the bubble? Is it possible to keep it?
But you know, I can't say definitively that it the bubble is an arrangement between the city and the current property owner. It's a it's a seasonal license. In our discussions with the flood department, they said they wouldn't issue a permit like that today as floods don't follow October to May. So it's a historic use. I can't say I don't know if anyone from the flood department is here from staff, but it it looks difficult to keep. And, you know, it has a lot of challenges. I think, you know, we're at concept review, so we're trying to balance all of these interests. But I know that it's we've been told that the city wouldn't issue a permit like that today in the high hazard zone.
And as the new holder of the property and developer, it would not pass down to you. You would need to apply for a new one?
I don't know the answer to that.
Some of these might be good for staff. Staff, feel free to chime in or maybe just a conversation for later. I don't mean to put you on the spot too much, Danica, if it's really a city question.
I don't know. Sloan, is anyone here from the flood division?
There's not, and I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, it's something we don't necessarily, you know, need to spend too much time on tonight, but I'd be very curious about that, you know, is it even possible to keep the bubble? Is it something that's even desirable? Or is the risk so severe that it's inadvisable with climate change? I think these would be good things to cover at some point. And let me ask one other question before seating the floor, and that was around the daycare that's onsite. Have you had conversations with that provider? And is there any intention to either provide them with a location onsite or perhaps help them relocate close by? Or is that not something that's happened?
Sure, I we I don't believe we've spoken to them. To clarify, we landmark is not the property owner yet. The Millennium Hotel Group is the owner. So they're they're under contract to purchase it. So the daycare in our plan, those buildings are shown to remain. They're also in the high hazard zone. So I don't know what the city will say about that, but certainly I definitely think I believe, you know, I would recommend our team that we work with them to find a relocation plan if they're not able to stay on site. It's a pretty small facility. I'm actually not sure what how much happens there, but I definitely would take that under advisement to research that and work with them. Cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. More questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm focused primarily on the 28th Street corridor and understanding if I was looking at that at sort of, you know, pedestrian height, what you'd see beyond a surface parking lot? And have you considered some alternative design studies to try to mitigate that lot? Because as I drive by it regularly, you know, that's a that's a pretty big eyesore driving in. And obviously, it's going to be new pavement, etc. But it I'd like to understand what other design studies you've done on that to try to try to really mitigate that. I think a lot about like what we did with what Ball Aerospace is doing on their site relative to to their streetscaping. That project came through not that long ago. So I'm curious what thoughts the applicant has on that.
Sure, we are adding landscaping along 28th Street. Just a note on the parking. It and I think the question came up before, are you allowed to add structure underground parking? And the answer is no. So you can the code basically lets you keep what you have in the high hazard zone. So we will be adding parking lot landscaping. I certainly think that's going to be very important to study how that what that corridor looks like. It's not great today. I'm not even sure there's much of a landscape strip. So we will be adding landscape. We've talked about possibly doing solar in that area. I think that would require a visual study as well. And I can hand it off to Wink to talk a little bit more how we can soften the treatment along there because we agree with you. It's not it's not our first choice to put parking on 28th Street. It's definitely the only thing that can stay there, though, given the code and the floodplain regulations. So I think we're open to how to be creative. Greg, do you want to touch on that?
I will agree with what you said. I think we're open to, I think staff had good recommendations that we should look at that and we agree. So I I think there there will be visual studies so that we don't have parking sidewalk building. I think we can have a layered landscape approach that begins at 28th, may break up the parking and as well as next to the building. So this is a recommendation that I think our whole team was shaking her head. Yes, this is something we need to study further.
Thank you. And the other question I have sort of on that same line, although not related to the parking and related to the building massing on 28th. I think, you know, I'm not going to comment on the architecture because it's it's as as you mentioned, you're in a massing study phase and that's fine. What I didn't see in the plan was building articulation on the 28th Street side. I saw it a lot facing the public spaces. But I wanted to get your thoughts on that as well.
That's also a good comment. I'll go ahead and answer that, Danica. I think that in addition to the expression of these buildings, we will be trying to break the building horizontally and vertically as well. So we will be working on that elevation. And frankly, I agree with exactly your concern.
Yeah, and I think it was quick in the fly through, but we were showing glass along that first level and really trying to create transparency. You know, one thing of note is that we will be asking for a, I believe, a use review to not require ground floor retail uses on that side of the building. We are proposing to create the activation on the center of the where the multi use path is. We believe that's going to be a really active zone. And that the 28th Street facing, you know, a big parking lot in 28th Street isn't the best place to retail. So that's something we'd like to get your thoughts on. And we can talk more about that. But that transparency in that light and creating at least a pretty first floor is is conceptually shown and will continue to articulate that.
Yeah, and I just to follow up comment on that, and then I'll see the floor. I did see the transparency. I was mostly talking about the roof articulation and the massing and breaking up the the mass of the building there because I think you've you've at least demonstrated that and at least your massing study relative to the public space, but I didn't see that on the 28th Street side. That's what I was commenting on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Georgie. More questions? If I don't see any more hands, we could go ahead and take a let's see, where are we at time wise? A six minute break for just to stretch our legs. And oh, I see something from John.
Yeah, thank you. Just a real quick question. In some of the renderings that you showed us tonight, with respect to the top floor that you desire, there's a considerable setback both from the south side. And I I think if I understood correctly, the north side. Is that an explicit proposal you're coming with? Or are you is this concept at this point?
No, it's an explicit proposal to step down the buildings as you go towards the creek and create. That's where the stepping we thought would make the most sense because that's where the buildings will be most visible. So and Chris, I'll hand it off to you.
Yes, well, I think what you said is correct. What we're doing here is just making a gesture to provoke comments from you. We we fully intend to differentiate possibly these different wings of the buildings and step them on the south at deference to the creek.
Okay, well, this this sounds like our conversation about the University Hill Hotel setback also, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
David, can I address two more questions that were asked earlier really quickly?
Sure, let's do that.
So just from the fire, I think it was brought up. What is the fire department thinking about this? This actually provides much better fire access now. This building is not very safe today. And when we met with Dave Lowry, he was actually happy to see that it was being replaced because it's not probably more similar to that older apartment building is not a very safe building. And so I think he was very happy to have better fire access and new construction. And to Peter's question about solar, definitely this is concept plan. We aren't showing anything much on from an architecture standpoint, but a lot of most projects these days do need to have solar. So and these buildings are were designed to have really good southern exposure and solar access. So I definitely think it's something we would consider. We just haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you, Danica, for for tying those closed for us as we move into the public comment section. So for the public, then, when we come back and let's break until about 53 after the hour. And what people can go ahead and start putting up their hands in the participants list. We'll be calling people in order that the hands go up. So you can raise your hand and let's take a quick break and we'll start our public comment shortly. At 53 after the hour. Okay, according to my clock, it is 53 after the hour. So that was our short break. Thank you to the public for we find that with these virtual meetings, a break every 90 minutes or so is really helpful to us. So thank you for your patience. I see people joining us. So if planning board members could please turn on their videos. So I know that we're all here. Once I see everybody, I will restart calling on people. I think Peter and Lupita, are you with us?
I can hear you, but you cannot see me.
There you go. And now we're just waiting for Lupita, or for Peter. But I assume Peter is with us. There he is.
Right. We just lost a tooth in the household.
Oh, no.
Tooth fairy is coming.
I hope it's a child's tooth. To be expected. All right. So, thank you, everybody. So, let's go ahead and get started with our public comment. This is the time where the public is invited to speak for up to three minutes on the topic at hand before us right now. The 28th Street project. So, I will start calling on people. The first person to be able to speak tonight would be Kyle Tullman, followed by Kurt Nordback, and then Rob Scott. So, Jean, if you could enable Kyle's ability to unmute, Kyle, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I am Kyle Tullman. I am a sophomore Electrical Engineering Order student at CU Boulder. And I am also a wheelchair user. And I would like to speak on this issue in regards to the tennis center that is currently there. The RMTC has done a lot to support wheelchair tennis and tennis as a whole in Boulder and throughout Colorado. And one thing that has not been made fully clear is that the condition of the courts on the south side and north side are very different. The courts on the north side are in much better condition and also feature a clay court, which is, as to my knowledge, the only one in Colorado, which is a very big asset for not only recreational players who are members of the club, but also professional players who are in this area, who use it to get ready for major tournaments. One thing that I have realized playing at this club is that it is a very active community of tennis players within the Boulder area and beyond. People come, especially for wheelchair tennis, from all across the front range to the RMTC specifically for the world-class coaching and the courts that are there. And one thing that is clear is that the amount of courts that they already have isn't even enough. Because when I'm there, most courts are always in use. And that means that we usually have only a couple of courts for our wheelchair tennis when we could use even a couple more. And the idea of getting rid of these courts, even just for more housing, I understand that. But the developers even said that quite a bit of that is for public space. And while I agree that public space is important, I also think it's important to note that Boulder as a community is very active and loves to promote the idea of getting out there and participating in sport. And these courts give that opportunity to people. They give the opportunity to people like me with a disability to get out there and play. And these courts don't need to be demolished, in my eyes, at least not all of them on the north side, the better courts, to give this public space when you look around Boulder and see so many other public parks and spaces that are already so well-developed that people can go to. Yes, the creek can be a bit more well-developed in that area, but I feel like there's enough space to do that while leaving the courts. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. Thanks for finishing in the three-minute and also for identifying yourself. I forgot to say, we ask for people to state your name, address, or at least your neighborhood you live in. So, appreciate that. So, next we'll go with Kurt Nordback and then Rob Scott, followed by Duke Pollock. Kurt?
Hi, Kurt Nordback, 777 Delwood Avenue. First, I want to express general support for this proposal. In the last campaign, this election campaign that we're just wrapping up, especially in the context of people, the one thing we've heard universally from all sides is that we need much more student-oriented housing. Students these days generally prefer this kind of amenitized living that's being proposed here. So, the more of it we have, the fewer students are either competing for general housing in Boulder or commuting in. So, I strongly support the general concept. I share the concerns about the frontage on 28th Street. I noticed that there is some room to push some building massing further east and stay within the 100-year flood area. And so, I would urge the board to request that the applicant try to do that. That might also address the concern, which I also share, about improving the articulation from the 28th Street side. So, I think to the extent that we can fully use that eastern edge of the 100-year, the 100-year flood area, that would be ideal. I strongly support the proposed parking reduction, given proximity to CU and the creek path. But in exchange, I think we need a really robust TDM, including perhaps a shuttle to and from campus, kind of perhaps modeled on the shuttle that's being required for the Spine Road development that was recently approved. And maybe also in agreement with the village to avoid any kind of overflow parking in their parking areas. Last, I want to talk about the creek path. The existing routing of the creek path is not good. There are two sharp corners. And so, I'm glad that the proposal would get rid of one of those. I would also like to see it get rid of the one on the south, which probably means replacing the existing bridge there. But I think that that would be an improvement. We could get a new bridge that's a little bit wider and it's routed more directly. I don't support the proposed routing of the path to the north of this lawn because I worry about people wandering between the streets and the lawn, crossing lots of traffic on the creek path. I would rather have the creek path remain directly north of the creek and the lawn adjacent to the buildings to keep that kind of activity together there. But I, as I said, I do like the idea of getting rid of the sharp curves on the path. I think that will make it more efficient and getting, if we were to remove this swooping curve, it would also make it a little bit quicker for walking to campus. Thanks.
Thank you, Kurt. Okay, let's hear from Rob Scott, followed by Duke Pollock, and then Holly Brown. Rob, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. First of all, the planning board members, you guys are civic saints. You have to listen to these presentations and deal with this stuff in your personal time and volunteer. So, thank you so much for all that you do in this space. First of all, I'm very supportive of the plan. The hotel is a dump. I've been, I've been in Bullory County for 40 years. I fully support student housing here. What a great thing. However, Rocky Mountain Tennis Center is a historic tennis gym. Kyle shed some light on that earlier, but it should remain intact. Many have been playing tennis here for over 40 years. Tennis is a lifelong sport that teaches significant character qualities. Kids do better, kids who play tennis do better in school. They lower their obesity rate. They have stronger social and community connections. Tennis players are proven to live longer and have a higher quality of life. Please do not diminish this absolute gen of tennis in Boulder, Colorado, the Intermountain Section, the US. I'm very opposed to eliminating tennis space for open space. When they say you're going to do that, then the lawn on the north side, that's great. But you know what? There's no other indoor tennis courts in Colorado that compare to Rocky Mountain Tennis Center. And for example, thousands of players come to Rocky Mountain Tennis Center to play in leagues, tournaments, socials. They come from all over the front range and out of state for that matter. And they, they bring an economic impact to the city of Boulder through dollars that they spend there. So, that's an important thing to consider as you go forward. In terms of, Danica made a comment earlier that it's not, it's difficult to keep a bubble, but I disagree. I think it's not difficult to keep a bubble because what she also said is you can keep what you have in a high-hazard flood zone. So, you know, I'll stop early in case I get extra points. But the fact of the matter is, this is a huge thing that you guys are considering, to eliminate the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center and indoor tennis in Boulder. And I would strongly recommend that you not do so. Thank you very much for your time and thanks for all you do for the city of Boulder.
Thanks, Rob. And thanks for acknowledging the highly prized points that people get for finishing early. Now, that's much appreciated. Thank you for the great comments. Okay, Duke Pollock, followed by Holly Brown, and then Kendall. And folks, remember to just state your full name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Duke Pollock. My address is 3117 Simran in Superior. I have been, I'm one of the owners of the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center and worked at the club for the past 35 years. I started in June of 1985, when it was the Hilton Harvest House. I'm really saddened by the fact that our club with the five-court bubble will likely not exist as is in the near future. We've been a gathering place for tennis league play, tournaments, social play, wheelchair tennis, high-performance training, et cetera. And over the years, as Rob said, have brought thousands of junior and adult players to Boulder to compete. I think many of us at the club and in the community are taking our frustration out because of lack of quality tennis facilities in Boulder on the current owners and new applicant. While some of us want more housing for options for students, some don't. Some may like the design, others don't. But we all hate to see fewer tennis courts, especially indoor in Boulder. We don't want tennis to stand in the way of what is best for the seller purchaser. And most importantly, what is best for the city of Boulder with the floodplain concerns. The property needs to be redeveloped, here, here from what Rob said. And the more courts included in that redevelopment, the better. I think the bigger picture for the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center is where do we go from here? And we will look to the city of Boulder, CU and area communities to find another home. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks much. All right. So, I think that our next speaker is Holly Brown, followed by Kendall, followed by Claudia Hansen theme.
Hey, Holly Brown from 9726 Phillips Road in Lafayette. And I have spent thousands and thousands of hours over the last 30-plus years around those grounds. And I must say, in all my travels around the United States, it is a world-class junior adolescent, adult, and programming and facility for disabled athletes. I feel like there's got to be some way to preserve both the integrity of the tennis facility that is fully open to the public. Yes, there are private members, but it is fully open to all those in Boulder and brings in tremendous revenue, I would say. I would also love to see, I know that student housing is necessary, but it feels like there's so many other places on CU where student housing could be developed. I would love to see it as a mixed-use apartment.
You could get closer to the microphone. You're fading in and out a little bit.
Yeah. I would like to see it as mixed-use apartments instead of just for, for students. I feel like it would be much healthier environment, especially along that creek corridor. I do think that we have many other access points on the creek corridor for lounging or recreating, but nothing at all in all of Boulder like the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. And thanks, Jean, for asking for the closer to the microphone. That helped a lot. So, Kendall, if you could state your last name in your introduction, then we'll go with Claudia Hansen theme and then Deb Gedenberg.
Yes, hello. My name is Kendall Chutember. I live at 924 Hawthorne Avenue in Boulder. I've had the privilege of working with Duke Pollock and my, my own wife, Donna Chutember. We're the three owners of the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center business, club owners at the current property. I should start by saying that I was a kid of a lower-to-middle, middle-class family, son of an immigrant from India who couldn't afford tennis lessons growing up, couldn't afford to develop as a tennis player. And so, I understand that where in the past tennis has been seen, seen as a sport that's been inaccessible to many families. We've tried at Rocky Mountain Tennis Center to, to open up the sport to as many different people, as many different demographics as we can. The dream of Rocky Mountain Tennis Center started in, in the 2000s, early 2000s, when we realized that the hotel might be redeveloped at some point. And so, we started looking to, to build new facilities. We've tried twice. We failed twice, unfortunately. We still have the dream that this inherent unfortunate, you know, and realistic existential threat to tennis, especially given the, the idea that CU South tennis complex may, may also be on the chopping block in the near future. It really puts a threat of undermining the, the potential to develop tennis as a sport for the community in the very near future. Our motto at RMTC is tennis everyone, question mark. And we truly mean that. You know, we've got, we've provided programming for, for every, everyone from preschool kids all the way up to some of the best players in the world over the years. This last year, we helped Andrea Seppi get ready for the French Open on our brand-new red clay court, which is one of the best in the country as far as I'm concerned. We've helped kids just picking up a racket, get all the way to college scholarships at, at big, big schools. And our goal is to continue, whether it's on the site or if we could all work together to, to find an answer to this, this, this issue. As a former member of the National Wheelchair Tennis Committee, I'm passionate about wheelchair tennis and providing opportunities for athletes with disabilities. And that's a huge part of what we do, along with providing opportunities for disadvantaged youth through the Youth Services Initiative with Boulder. I hope we can work together to, to, to achieve a solution. And I apologize for going a few seconds over, but I thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you so much, Kendall. And great. Let's go on to Claudia Hansen theme, followed by Deb Gedenberg, and then Rosie Vivian. Claudia?
Hi, good evening, members of planning board. This is Claudia Hansen theme. I live in the Holiday Neighborhood. I really appreciate hearing from all the folks from the tennis center. I'm learning so much about that. Just want to say thanks for being here. I'm really excited to see this proposal to redevelop a property that has fallen into disuse and which has the potential to contribute a significant amount of student housing on the edge of the CU campus. Because of its central location, this is a site that will allow us to put into practice many of the principles of compact development and walkable neighborhoods that we like to talk about. And with that in mind, there's three things I'd like to ask for at this concept review stage. The first of those is please be aggressive with parking reductions and transportation demand management programs. There's no need for standard amounts of parking at a project with such good proximity to services, employment, and school with good existing connections with a younger population that's more likely to forego car, car ownership and with limited potential for spillover into adjacent neighborhoods. The applicant has asked for a 46% parking reduction. We could probably push for better, but I don't think we should sacrifice housing cars, however you resolve this. Second, please consider the request to place the building fronts on the interior and creek-facing sides of the buildings rather than that 28th Street frontage. I know the comp plan is committed to activating street interfaces, but anyone who moves along that 28th Street corridor already knows that that's a hostile environment for sidewalk life, six lanes of traffic. The interface with the backside of the shopping center to the north may not be quite as chaotic, but it's also not particularly inviting, being kind of back-of-house. So, placing entrances and ground-floor retail and commercial uses on the interior would enhance connections to the creek path and I think invites non-car movement through and around that site. And then finally, there's this issue of open space, that 1,200 square feet per residence that is required in BT1 zoning. As we've seen at Diagonal Plaza, that's a steep requirement for higher-density housing. It significantly constrains the number and type of housing units that can be provided. But on this site, it actually works, except we have the tennis club there, as folks are talking about. And so, it seems like the applicant is in a bit of a lose-lose situation here. If you displace the tennis facilities, you raise the ire of the community. If you keep the tennis facilities, you get dinged by our building code, by our zoning code for falling short of usable open space. If you keep the tennis facilities, you get dinged by our building code, by our zoning code for falling short of usable open space. And I think this is our problem as Boulder community, right? We can only have two of the three things here. We can have housing, we can have tennis, or we can have open space. And I would ask for you and city staff to find and support a solution that does not cut into the housing proposed here as you figure out how to mediate those things. I think the Millennium site has a history of high-intensity uses. It's a great place to provide a lot of housing for full-time members of our community. And let's not lose sight of that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Okay, we'll go now to Deb Gedenberg, followed by Rosie Vivian, and then we'll go to Lynn Segal. You can go ahead, Deb.
Hi, my name is Deb Gedenberg. I live at 2685 Crest Ridge Court in Boulder. I am the owner of the daycare center there. It is a small center, but it's called Dreammakers. We've been there for 20 years. I and my daughter run the center. And there's also a third business that hasn't been mentioned on that side of the creek. And that is the Simba Bike and Eldora Ski Club. They cater to hundreds of children and teens year-round, providing skiing, biking in the mountains, just wonderful, healthy recreation for our young community. Both Simba Eldora and Dreammakers preschool provide scholarships for children that cannot afford to go to these places. We have a wonderful relationship with Rocky Mountain Tennis for the past 20 years. They have given every child that went through Dreammakers free tennis lessons with using their tennis pros. And we also have a wonderful relationship with the Carolan across the parking lot there. Every Tuesday, for years before COVID, we went to the senior living facility where they made lunch for our children. And we had music and with instruments and dancing and movement for the seniors and the children, which was a beautiful intergenerational relationship. I would just like to say that if we lose the Rocky Mountain Tennis in any way, it would really be horrible for us and a lot of people around that area. So I would hope that that wouldn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, so we'll go now with Rosie Vivian. And I think I said Suzanne Forlaga next, followed by Lynn Segal. Hopefully I got that right. So Rosie, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Rosie Vivian. I live in Table Mesa neighborhood. And I just want to say I feel pretty connected to this site. I can tell so many stories about clients and friends and colleagues of my husband who works at N-Car, who have stayed there and talked about how great it was to walk on the creek path. And there's a lot of nostalgia for this site, but I really think, I echo what Kurt and Claudia both have said, and that housing is first and foremost. I mean, that is the biggest need we have in Boulder right now. We've heard over and over in this election cycle that we need housing for students. And it's just so important and it really should take precedence over everything else. And I think these stories about the tennis club are so moving and important. But I also think, you know, there's a lot of opportunity there. I mean, maybe, I think the idea was brought up that at CU South, we have these tennis courts that are just sitting there that it's going to be at least 10 years before those can be used. Is there a way that the city can accommodate this amazing tennis club at that site? And could this, could that be somehow used in the meantime? Because it's going to be a long ways out. And I just think that this proposal is going to be awesome. I worked with Andy Rockmore from Shears Atkins Rockmore. The first five years I lived in Boulder from 1999 to 2004. And I know that that architecture firm is going to do a wonderful job with the architecture on that site. So I'm not even worried about how they're going to address this. I know that that is going to evolve and it's going to be a beautiful asset for Boulder. And I really think we need to think about the future of Boulder first and housing and student housing. I mean, I've just heard for weeks on end about how much we need more student housing and what a place for it on the Boulder Creek path. So thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. Okay, let's go to Suzanne Forlaga, followed by Lynn Segal and then Dr. Socha or Soka. And so I'll go ahead, Suzanne, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name's Suzanne Forlidge and I live at 2144 LaSalle Street in Superior. And I just wanted to call or dial in in support of RMTC. I have four children from the ages of 17 down to five, and they are all tennis players. And just recently, one of my kids has just fallen in love with the sport, hopes to play maybe someday in college. And the only place that I feel like we have this opportunity for tennis, I know that we're looking for affordable housing. Well, at RMTC, we have affordable tennis. It's the only location that has an indoor facility where we can play. If we want to go anywhere else for indoor, we have to join a country club, which is not in our budget. So we really can't speak highly enough about the coaching, the staff, the owners. The program's fantastic and I understand the desire to redevelop the Harvest House. It is an eyesore today. That is true. I think something does need to be done. My hope would just be that it could be redeveloped with keeping those courts intact, that there could be a compromise there. And so I know it's a tough situation that you all are in. I know it's difficult for everybody. I also have these four kids who are probably going to go to CU one day and they're going to need housing. I just feel like there, that's something I'll figure out, I suppose, at another point. And there are other housing opportunities. There are no other locations for them to play tennis at an indoor facility in Boulder. So thank you very much. I get my points for finishing early.
Thank you, Suzanne, and I'm sorry for the pronunciation there.
Oh, that's quite all right.
I was pronouncing, I know German and Dutch, so I'm always saying it the way they say things.
Yes.
All right, so Lynn Segal, you should be able to unmute. We'll be following you with Dr. Socha. And then that's the last person I see a hand up with. So if anybody else wants to speak, please do raise your hand. So Lynn, you should be able to go.
I have a solution for the tennis courts. Let's exhume all of the residents of the cemetery up at Columbia and fill it with housing or fill it with tennis courts. The world is not built on housing. Boulder is not a suburb of CU. Berkeley, the folks that are running this job, just like the Core down at the Olive, student housing, student housing, student housing, Best Western, student housing, other places next to Best Western, student housing, student housing, student housing, students. This town is not owned by CU. Do you understand? Seriously. Good God. Housing drives services. Services are leaving. You just voted for Folsom and Pearl to lose all those services. You just did the same thing with 21st and Pearl. All the services gone, the thrift store's gone, the furniture store's gone, everything gone. Housing, 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 high-end housing. You know, I lost pieces of my tooth tonight, Peter. I'm 68 years old, you know, one of my molars. I guess I'm just going to live with it because I can't afford to fix my teeth because the housing costs here are driven up by this kind of a situation where you're just approving these four stories. No, 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 no. Surface parking? No, they can dig. They've got to eat their profit for change. Eat their profit. Shut it down. This is utterly ridiculous. You know, they bought on a friggin' flood zone. They bought it. They have to deal with it. You know, oh, we've got three feet. We have to bring it up. So we need a height exemption? No. You bought in a friggin' floodplain. Live with it. Deal with it. Let's see my list. So on my per capita impact idea, oh, first of all, you need an area plan for this place before you agree to this. The other thing is, you know what you need for housing here? Marpa housing, marpa housing. Make that your mantra. When you go to sleep at night, think marpa housing, marpa housing, marpa housing. We are evolving to a different kind of housing. It's called multi-generational. It's called supportive. Then we don't have the Halloween mall crawl. Then we don't have the hill riots. People live communally together. We don't have cars that we're just driving the whole situation with. And Berkeley.
And Lynn, can you wrap up?
My last thing. Berkeley sued UC to make them with an enrollment cap. And that's what Boulder needs to do. Boulder is not a suburb of CU. Boulder is not.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, so we'll go now with Dr., I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name right, Dr. Socha. And then Makin Cole has raised his hand. You can go ahead and unmute.
David, I'm just going to, it looks like Dr. Socha has an earlier version of Zoom, so I'm going to promote them to panelists briefly. And you should be able to unmute.
How's that working?
I think, I think I'm on. Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. And if you could just say your full name and address, that'd be great.
Dr. Jonathan Soka. I'm at 1853 26th Street, next to the Derry Arts Center. So I have the privilege and I've really fallen in love with the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center. I can jog there in three blocks on my way to warm up before I play tennis three to five times a week. And that's a hard act to follow of what we just witnessed. But I agree with a lot of the sentiment that's been expressed tonight already. The only things that are unique that I want to share is that in this development or redevelopment of this property, which I think, you know, it's popular sentiment around Boulder that it needs to be renovated or, you know, redeveloped. So that's kind of, you know, not a question, but my demographic doesn't seem to be included ever here. I'm 42 years old. I'm a young professional or middle-aged professional, and it's always about the students. So that's just an interesting, you know, yet again, a whole other brand-new building. I'm looking to buy a property and, you know, have an investment myself. And I don't think I would want to live in a place like that with, you know, four-bedroom apartments that are going to be filled with students that are all ruining the building like they have ours here at the View on 26th. So but other than that, you know, getting back to the tennis center, it's just been a wonderful experience witnessing all the programs that have been mentioned. And its rarity is the location. It's so central. Well, I don't think it's possible to ever recreate tennis, that many tennis courts in downtown Boulder with the way the constraints are now. I mean, there's just no supply of that kind of land or, you know, and I don't want to have to drive 20 minutes in such a tiny city to have to get to tennis courts. So but thank you for what you do and all, I mean, this has really been impressive. A lot of great planning and thought has gone into this. So hopefully you'll take my sentiment with that.
Thank you so much, Jonathan. Okay, so finally, we have the last person with their hand up is Makin Cole. If anyone else would like to speak, you can still put your hand up. Makin?
Good evening, planning board. Makin Cole, 1726 Mapleton Avenue. You have a tough job with this concept review. It's really challenging. And it reminds me of when I was on planning board and we had the concept review and then the site review for the Peloton. Because there were, there's no input that we had about the specific design of the site, which is what you're supposed to focus on at concept review. You've had some good comments tonight about that, but for the most part, you're on your own. This is a very special site and it's important to do something special there. You're being asked for a very dense development, 295 units. But there's a huge amount of open space of this 15-acre site, nearly six or seven acres is going to be open space. The part that is not, and tennis courts, as I understand, can't be counted as open space. It'd really be nice if the city would find another spot for the tennis courts to be so that in the plan for the millennium, as it moves forward, you can use both sides of the creek. If you look at the south side of the creek, between the creek and the Carolan, there's up to 150 feet of riparian area that could be reclaimed and made wonderful, just like the proposal on the north side of the site that could be open to members of the public and used by the city and residents from all over town, as well as by the people who live in that, in the building that's there. This, the second point I want to make is I want to support the parking reduction. This is an ideal place for bike-centered transportation. And it looks like we're about to get serious on climate change nationally. We need to change our infrastructure. This is just a great place to use bikes and get all over the city and to the university from there. Another point would be this development has to inspire and anticipate the redevelopment of the strip mall just to the north of it. Cities all over the country are redeveloping their strip malls, and that one is going to have to be redeveloped too. So it's important that this development, as it focuses on the creek, not turn its back on what's happening and what will happen to the north. Finally, I want to comment on the U-shaped buildings. This is a wonderful way to set up apartment buildings, a U shape with the corridor in the center and the open end of the U facing the creek. But in this case, most of the U shape, instead of being courtyards, they're as thin as corridors. And I'd be very concerned about that. So let me, I'll leave you with those thoughts. Thank you for receiving my comments. And I look forward to hearing the discussion of all of you about this site.
Thank you, Makin. All right, we have two new hands that have gone up. We have Ivan or Yvonne Design, followed by Heather Kroger. So Ivan, go ahead and introduce yourself when you're ready. You should be able to unmute and talk.
Ivan, it looks like you're unmuted.
Okay, and thank you for your patience. Can you hear me now?
Sure.
Okay, this is my first time on Zoom, so my apologies for my technology challenge. I am a Boulder native. I have lived in this area. I have both visited the area for recreational use. There is a lot of activities that have happened over the years, both on the Fourth of July, unrelated to the Millennium Hotel or the tennis club, which I have to say, the tennis club is really a fundamental anchor in this community. If you look at what it has done, not just for the people that belong there, but also how they maintain the area, how they do this presence, how many great athletes both coach there and then come out of there. And it's a hub. And any good community has multiple facets that are there. And it's not just housing. And I understand we need to redevelop. We need to look at all areas and adapt and grow. But at this point, we really should look at including that as part of the design, especially since the area behind it is so degraded, that whole strip mall, that Safeway area. And why don't we look at how we can still include the tennis club and what it brings to so many people, even the people that don't play tennis, still redevelop, how we need to redevelop and make it more of an inclusive area. And the other thing I was going to say is, thank you for everybody. thank you for everybody. There's a lot of thought that has went into this, but so many times, there has been like, oh, I can't answer that question at this time. And we haven't really explored that, and we're not to that point yet. And why are we only looking at one proposal? Let's, let's postpone this vote for just a little bit. And let's get some other input. Let's get some other design options. And let's really think this through and not just jump on board with, we gotta do something, because there's a lot of good ideas here. But we don't want to make rash decisions. And, and also, I'd like to see it more inclusive for the whole community. Yes, CU, but also the community that lives here full-time. And to the point of the respecting the whole environment area, CU students, some of them are good with that. But for the most part, college students, they're not the most respectful. That's not the age that's really respectful of like environmental situations, you know, it's just how it is. So I'm just putting it out here. Let's, let's, let's pause. Let's just take a breath. Let's take some time to observe what we've heard, what we're thinking, and get some other proposals going, too, and come back to this. Thank you so much. Thank you for everybody.
And thank you. Could you just clarify your name verbally for the record, too? Just so I know that you're displaying.
Ivan Design, and I am a Boulder neighbor. And that is a pseudonym, because I'm a girl, and I prefer not to be. But I grew up in Newlands, Boulder, and now I live more on the east side of Boulder County.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I'm more than happy to share anything more. Thank you.
We'd just like to have a verbal name on the record. So thank you so much, Ivan.
Thank you all.
And so now we'll go with Heather Kroger.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, hi. My name is Heather Kroger. I live at 2510 Taft Drive. I am in the permanently affordable housing building. So that's a bit of my concern, the cash and boo for affordable permanent housing. I'm curious about that. I've never been to one of these before, so I'd like to thank you all, planning board, for your service and hearing us. I appreciated the presentation. My immediate personal concerns were addressed already, and I'm grateful for that. What is still on the board to be discussed is the community of my neighborhood. I don't like the idea of Dreammakers or the tennis court or the single mountain bike adventures disappearing. They are a vital piece. I've been here 18 years and rather like my community. I live right among student housing, as well as Carillon across the street from me. And I love this multi-generational block that I have. And I do not find the students to be disruptive. I think youth can be wild at times, but that's youth. Overall, they make great neighbors. And I think they would be a nice neighbor across the creek. But I also have concerns about feeling that I won't have the freedom to publicly access the creek path when it feels like it's more theirs, because it's so close to where they live. That's one of the little incidences that seems to happen frequently in the summer now. And I just worry about it becoming more prevalent with students on both sides. And my only other concern is questioning traffic impact. They do have cars. There's, that's not going to stop them. They all drive Mercedes, BMWs, and Teslas and giant Ford pickup trucks. And I'm curious how that's going to impact my street, as well as Folsom, as they come and go. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Heather. And I don't see any more hands. I'll give it just a few more seconds here to see if anybody puts their hand up. And while we do that, just for the public, I'll just summarize what we're here tonight to do. A concept review is a step in the process where we give general feedback to the proposal. So we're not going to be making any formal decisions tonight. We don't vote on anything. What we will do is we will offer feedback on key issues. And we will all use the comment, the really great comments that we've heard from the public to inform a lot of our feedback to, to the developer and the applicant tonight. So all of, all of the comments that you've made tonight were very timely, because they do give direction. The time that we will actually make a vote on, on this would be if and when it comes back for a site review. And so, again, I just think, I just want you all to know that it was very timely for you to voice your opinions at this point. So with that, since I don't see any more hands, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and go back to our applicants and see if you would like to spend two to three minutes just addressing anything that you heard from the public. And Danica, I see that you've come back and, and the architect team. So feel free to address anything that you've heard tonight.
Sure. Well, thank you. And I do appreciate hearing from all the tennis center people. And as I mentioned, we've, we've met with them, and we will continue to, you know, meet with them. I think it's a complex situation. And, you know, we tried to come up with a compromise that allowed for tennis to remain. And, you know, we understand the importance of the bubble. And so I think we will continue to meet and work with that, that community. It was great hearing from the daycare. And my son is part of Simba, so I certainly, we planned the outreach with them as well. So thank you for coming. I will reiterate, this is very early on in the process. And so there's a lot of work for us to do. And we take the comments that we'll receive here very seriously. And I think, you know, this is a complex site, as everybody's mentioned. And so this is the, this is the concept design. And we would love to get your comments on how we can make it better and get direction from you. I don't know if the ownership or the applicant group were not the owners yet, or Shears Atkins would like to add anything?
No, Danica would just echo what you said. We appreciate everyone's comments and look forward to hearing the board's thoughts.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. So awesome. So I guess that leads us then to the point where we'll be going through our deliberation. So we're going to open it up to comments from the board now. There have been four key issues identified. Would the board like to see those key issues up as we go through? I think that would probably be useful if Sloan, if you're, if you have those handy, or I can certainly start to talk through them. So the four key issues that we have in front of us are, is the proposed concept plan compatible with the goals and objectives, recommendations of the BVCP? So in that one, I think that we'll talk a lot about the uses, the mix of uses, and certainly include the landmarking or the, you know, the historic aspects and things like that, and anything else that our BVCP informs. I would say for key issue two, which is the BVRC criteria, key issue two would be a good time for us to maybe talk about parking and traffic circulation, just because I think a lot of that fits in the BVRC section. So maybe we can kind of simplify by moving some of the discussion on traffic and parking there. Then key issue three is pretty straightforward, height mass scale. Are they compatible with the character of the area? And then finally, key issue four, we'll focus on the open space issues. So hopefully that helps people organize their thoughts. So let's start with key issue one. Anyone want to kick us off on the BVCP compatibility?
Could I ask, I just like to follow up on the, the public comment for a moment.
Oh, yeah.
Ask staff a question regarding the tennis bubble specifically, since that seems to be a great concern to that specific community. My question is on that, if that were to remain intact on the site as it is today, because I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the plan and trying to overlay the massing of the buildings against that. And also, there appears to be, the applicant appears to have put some surface parking in an area where they might be able to build on that, on that side of the site. But my question is really to staff, if, is it permitted? I know that the, the bubble's in the, in partially in the flood zone. Is it permitted for that to remain if it's not touched, meaning in, in the flood zone?
Sure. I was able to reach out to the Development Review Manager for Engineering. And he said that if, as part of overall development, a new permit would be needed for the site, then they would have to meet current code, which would not allow for a seasonal permit. He said they would probably need more information, but likely the courts would be included in that overall flood plan, flood permit for the entire site and would not be permitted.
So does that mean?
I'm pretty sure it's very likely that that bubble would have to be removed.
So does that mean the three buildings also have to go then, the, on the other side?
Um, that's because they're not seasonal. My understanding is they would be allowed to remain as long as no modifications would, would be part of that. So no additional floor area that can.
You might not have the information, but could you explain why the difference between seasonal and not seasonal, and why that matters relative to this?
Yeah, you know, I don't know the backgrounds. I just know that we don't, the current code does not allow for seasonal permits. And because that's the way the tennis bubble was permitted, it would, it would no longer be permitted. There are, you know, in terms of the permanent structures, they would be regulated like any other structure that is currently in the flood plain, meaning that they wouldn't be allowed to replace or expand.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to, it's not necessarily the time, but I'd love to dig in just to clarify those items. I think that would be helpful for the public to understand, too, as we go forward.
Well, and to understand if there are, I mean, we allow non-conforming uses all the time. And it seems to me like if, if in fact, the general consensus is something that has to do with trying to sustain the operations of the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center by sustaining some of those north side tennis courts, you know, it's a non-conforming use. And is there, what, it's worth asking going forward, how might those be brought in under a new review in a way that is worth, that works, that works? I just, just because the permitting, and by permitting, Sloan, if I'm, you're not saying the city would not permit this to happen. You are literally talking about the permit itself, correct?
Yeah. So to clarify this, that would, it's not a land use issue. So it's, wouldn't be considered a non-conforming use, quote unquote. It has to do with FEMA regulations and our certification under FEMA. So it's a flood issue, and it has to do with the bubble in terms of that courts themselves. There's nothing prohibiting that. And I think it would, it's also a good time for me to clarify that the space used by the tennis courts could potentially be used as open space for the residential development, as long as they had access to that. So it could be a shared open space arrangement. Just because it's utilized by the tennis doesn't mean that it couldn't also be used to meet their open space purposes, as long as the residents had access to those.
So there, so there are potential solutions out there. It's not a black and white yes or no. There's potential solutions, as long as folks are willing to try to find some common ground.
From a land use perspective.
From a land, yeah, I'm not, from a land use perspective. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
So I have a key issue one.
Should we, should we go ahead and dive into key issue one? You ready to do that?
If you are. It kind of follows up on George's comments about the tennis courts. So I thought there were some incompatibility with some elements of Boulder Valley Comp Plan, in particular, some of the economic recommendations. The first being 5.03 diverse mix use of, mix of uses and business types. Let me preface this. The, I think the tennis center, and now that, which I didn't know about the, the motor, the mountain biking organization and the daycare center, those are all local businesses that are potentially at risk for this development. So I would point to 5.03, which is diverse mix of housing and business types, 5.05, which is support for local business and business retention. And very specifically, it's the city, the Boulder Valley Comp Plan says, "The city recognizes the vital role of small, local, and independent businesses and nonprofits that serve the community, and will balance the needs of redevelopment in certain areas with strategies that minimize displacement of existing businesses." And then item 510, 5.10, which is titled "Role of Arts, Culture, Historic, and Parks Recreation Amenities." And it says, "The city and county will work to support recreation amenities, so they continue to contribute to the economic vitality of the community, providing unique offerings and fostering meaningful connections to Boulder among its residents, workforce, and visitors." And while maybe under the definite, I'm not sure by definition, if by parks and recreation, it's specifically city parks, but this is clearly a recreation facility that has tremendous impact on our community, particularly on members of our community who are other A-Bolden, play wheelchair tennis. So I think those are three very important elements of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan that are not met under the current proposal, and I think could be with some modifications.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. And as we go around, feel free to expand on other areas of key issue one, if you'd like. I mean, Sarah, if you had other things you could go, or we could go around and come back to you as well.
Come back to me.
All right. Who, anyone want to go next? I'd be glad to if, if no one else is wanting to go next. All right. Well, first of all, yes, in general, I see a lot of compatibility with principles in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. I think that one thing that kind of jumps out at me is that we are looking at BT, which is transitional. So I'll echo some of Sarah's comments that when, when we see something that's so residential heavy, it, it, it seems that maybe we can look for more transitional business feel to this. And so I would like to see whether there are more opportunities for that, that will activate the ground floor on, on key sides of the development and, and, and I kind of increase the number of things going on in this place. Another one I would mention, just from, from a diversity standpoint, we do have 7.10 housing for a full range of populations. It, you know, it could be interesting to examine, as some community members have said. I looked specifically at Jerry Shapiro's comments in email, that perhaps different populations could be served with housing. I know that that can be a heavy lift when you're, you know, trying to target a certain population, but it could certainly enhance the, the mix. So, so that might be something to look at. Let's see. I'll go ahead and move into the historic significance of the site. I think it's great that we're documenting. Looking at figure two, it kind of made me so sad because I'm a huge fan of mid-century modern. And that was such a beautiful look, and from 1959, the year I was born. But I, you know, none of us have ever seen that. And when buildings are modified so much, I understand why our historic Boulder, you know, staff find that it is no longer historically significant. But, but it is certainly, from a youth standpoint, as we look back through the years, there are desires to keep an active area behind, along the creek path there. We live the Friday afternoon clubs, the, and things like that. So, so let's try to preserve the historic uses that are diverse and interesting in that area that everybody passes all the time. With regards to the tennis courts, I was going to talk more about that and open space, but this is something that when at concept review, we hear such big concerns from the public, that we really like that to send a signal to you, the developers and city staff, that we have some work to do. That when it comes back for site review, we, oftentimes, that work happens. And when it comes back for site review, a lot of the And when it comes back for site review, a lot of those concerns we find have been addressed. So that's the challenge. Uh, let's look at this. I'm not a big fan of the that bubble to the right of the creek path, to tell you the truth. As you go along there, it is kind of a monolithic thing and have and having that open up right there. I I think might be kind of cool. Uh, but I but when you whenever you lose something that the community is really enjoying. Uh, and and businesses that might get displaced, let's make sure to look at that. Um, it was looked at with the Hill Hotel. Uh, and uh that that's a that's a big uh step that needs to happen between concept. And just for the public's um, you know, uh, information, you know, we as a board can't necessarily. Require things that aren't uh, you know, in in the code, but we can certainly encourage. And uh we we'd like to see the public's need for a good tennis space addressed. Um, let's see. The public space, um, the step down to the creek and activating the creek is wonderful. And in line with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan descriptions of public spaces and stuff. I want to caution us on the uh that that beach to the east of the bridge. When I go past there, I see um young people doing backflips into deep water there, which is really, really cool to see. And uh I just, if we cannot dumb it down too much, you know, I I I know that it's probably considered kind of um crazy, unsafe space in some ways. But it it is one deep spot in the creek where people really have a lot of fun. And uh and people do it in a way that isn't totally programmed. So uh. I I just want to point that out. I don't know about the fish fish um museum so much, whether people use that. But I do know that people swim there all the time in hot weather. So I I'd like to see that that preserved as part of our Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Uh, aspirations to have good public spaces uh for the use of people. Uh, and um. Yeah, that I'll just leave it there for now. John.
Well, on on this issue, I think uh between you and Sarah, you have really hit the main points. And I would just like to say how much I agree with you. Um, I, one thing that is unclear to me. Uh, and something that I think is probably open to some negotiation or discussion. Between the applicant and staff at some point before uh our next chance to look at this. Is how how the tennis courts might be dealt with from an open space perspective. In terms of uh somehow providing the credit for the open space. Uh, with the with the existence of these tennis courts. It's not clear to me that there's no possibility there for some sort of uh. Uh, outcome that is more satisfactory to both parties. But the other point that um David made that that I would like to to emphasize. Is the possibility of of maintaining the uh commercial, I wouldn't say commercial. But uh the uh the ground floor, commercial and entertainment aspects. That have been there in the recent past. I think that that is such a delightful location. And uh with the with the resident population that could go a long way to keeping it viable commercially. I think that is something that the applicant should uh think very carefully about. And orienting that to the side facing the creek, I think has real potential. But the other uh aspect that we want to remember, and this will come in in later discussions also. Is that along the north side of the project, we don't want that just to turn into a service alley. Uh, that we want to be made into an attractive and lively street as well. So I'll come back with more thoughts on the other on the other topics.
Great, John. Yeah, and I was going to discuss some of that in key issue four two, since that has um kid designing characters. So we'll we'll be looping back to that as well. Um, Georgie, you want to go next?
Yeah, yeah, um, I I I tend to agree with uh all all three of you spoken so far um on pretty much everything. The the one thing um that I I think is really interesting here is the student housing use. I mean, I I I I agree with the applicant in the city that this is a, this is an opportunity for student housing. And for take some of the pressure off our housing inventory. I I I would like to actually, my my concern with this development is that it's going to be luxury student housing. Um, and um I think there might be an opportunity here to use the same square footage. But densify the housing opportunity and make it more affordable for students. Um, more akin to a dorm style than all these apartments. It's, I think it would be possible that we might see uh an uptick of maybe. Uh, a third to a half more people that could be served by the housing on this site, if designed like that. Um, and that could also create some additional affordability where these wouldn't be these luxury student apartments. Um, and so I I I I think that that would achieve Boulder's goals um much more. By creating more student housing here in the same footprint, alleviating pressure elsewhere and also making it more affordable. So um that 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 would be my only other comment that it's a little out there, but I I think there's opportunity there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, other um other comments on key issue one. Okay, well, I'll go with Peter and then we'll come back to you, Sarah.
I like the the call out of two point three three on sensitive infill for the most part. I. I don't know if this is where this belongs, but I want to push on Twenty Eighth Street and. How we manage that piece there, because if it is sensitive infill, I want to see that experience. I think there's more that can be done there. Um, retail facing the creek path as a. I don't want to put that as a number four for primary users of the site because that's for everyone. So I really like that idea of the. Activating that space and this comment could go to four, but I'm going to put it here as well. Management plan for that open lawn and the river lawn, because it's um. It looks pretty inviting and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of folks using it. And I don't want it to become a burden to the Boulder Police Department. And I'm sure it wouldn't uh because there's a lot at stake here on the site. But I'm looking forward to seeing some language around a management plan and how that's going to work. I think that's good. That's for number one for me now. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So um if um Lisa or Lupita want to speak, um, otherwise we'll go to Sarah for a second now.
I have more to say um later, but mostly I'm just agreeing with a lot of what I'm hearing from other board members. So I'm kind of holding comments for some of the later um things, but basically I just I agree with what I've heard.
Great. Thank you. Anything you wanted to add, Lupita, or shall we?
Well, I. This particular point was a little bit difficult for me because I. I personally do not think the University of Colorado serves us the needs of the state of Colorado. Precisely because of the lack of diversity that I have on that campus. And something like this, somebody just brought up the issue of the likely unaffordability of the housing associated with the site. Uh, considering that, you know, uh, this institution is not affordable to many people in this state. This would only add to it. So having affordable housing will be one thing, but being able to afford a state school that doesn't. Uh, behave like a state school, I think it will be, um, you know, sort of like it doesn't meet the the. Uh, the criteria. That was the part where I was struggling. How do you, how how do I explain this? Because even if you have affordable housing, they don't accept poor people. So it is difficult. Um, so I I I I find this a a difficult um side. Because we do need more housing for our students here. That's very clear. Uh, but um, you know, also the city uh needs uh to meet the needs of, you know. Of meet the requirements of our uh comprehensive plan. And um, how do we make that happen? I think the piece where they're definitely serving a a good. Uh, providing a good service to our community is of the the tennis courts from what we have heard from our community members. Uh, and manners that we don't have anywhere else, apparently even at the state level. So um. It it that's what I find difficult because I I I have a hard time reconciling this very two extremes in my mind. Um, I just, um, I would just leave it at that because I'm I'm struggling with this particular piece. And I'll be happy to continue to listen and see how, you know, what kind of recommendation we can make. But certainly if there's a way that this site can be making more affordable, uh, of course, affordable for the living. But you cannot make the university affordable. So, you know, again, we're gonna get, we're gonna send kind of people in there. And um. We will continue to see the. The commodification of this city. Yeah, that's that's my concern. We're we're going in a direction that is opposite of how the country is going.
Thank you, Lupita. Um, yes, okay, um, Sarah, go ahead.
So I want to, two things, I just want to respond to George's idea. It's um, I had actually written, it would be interesting. Or nice if the required permanently affordable housing. That is of the community benefit for which the developer gets the additional stories, story. Um, would be on site rather than fed into the permanently affordable housing program. Not because it wouldn't be great in the permanently affordable housing program, but housing is a major cost for students. And can often drive students who are from low and moderate income families into further college debt. Um, now, since the applicant is a student housing. Uh, provider, that is what they do. It they clearly know the various segments of their potential audience. And um, it would be an interesting idea to ask them what what they could do to ensure that there was. That they build that permanently affordable housing on site. So that's one point I just want to make. And I have some concerns about the um riparian areas around the creek. Um, the so the Boulder Valley Com Plan speaks to the protection of our wetlands. And uh, the design that's been proposed suggests a series of steps down to the creek. And it concerns me that um we would be inviting that those stairs would invite. The hundreds and hundreds of young people who might be living in this um new building to use the creek. I I realize that the creek is available for recreation, but to have huge numbers of students or young people using the creek at any given time. I would want, I'd want to know more about what the implications are for the riparian areas, for the creek as a wildlife corridor. I just think it's important to understand what the um proposed programming for this uh natural area. Might, how it might impact the wildlife needs of this exact same resource. That's important to me to understand.
Thanks, Sarah. Good points there about the um programming. I think that would be something we really like to understand at site review. I'll add to that in this category, um, because of um uh BVCP policies around um sustainability. Um, I will just echo, and I think the applicant has stated that we we will see a solar. Uh, a plan for solar, rooftop solar, which I think will be good and other other kinds of things that we see at site review. Like EV charging and all that kind of stuff. So um, yeah, Peter.
On that, I would encourage uh an analysis of how the relationship with the university and its energy strategy and goals. It's microgrid, et cetera, could uh play a role in this, given the proximity and it's going to be student housing. It seems like it would be a um a lost opportunity if that. That outreach outreach wasn't done, at least to determine how it could play into. Research and studies underway on how multifamily and this kind of living and its energy mix and its impact on the grid. Can play out. Maybe some of the kids could get some credits.
All right. Well, are we ready to move on to uh key issue two, which is uh is the concept plan consistent with the guidelines for the. Oldy but bull BVRC, Boulder Valley Regional Center. And here I thought we could talk about the transportation and parking issues, just since that can fit nicely into that, since that's kind of within the BV. RC area. Anyone want to kick us off on that?
Oh, I will. If nobody else will.
Go right ahead.
So uh, this is, this is the issue George brought up about the um. The having surface parking along the street, along Twenty Eighth Street, um, rather than building frontage. And a building forward design. And uh, in some ways, it's a. It's not a moot point exactly, but because of the high hazard area, there's kind of nothing that can be done here per se. But um, it would be nice if the if the applicant, so I I'm, I I think you have to tie this into the question of the parking reductions. And um, the, I think the parking reduction request is um unrealistic. The idea that students won't have cars. Uh, and that the students who might live here won't be able to pay the rent. The parking fee is also unrealistic. Um, and I expect that there will be a lot of cars that will overflow into other areas. Um, and the the staff actually recommended, or not recommended, they suggested that one way to address that was to make the building smaller. So that you had fewer dwelling units and therefore fewer need, uh, your parking uh needs were reduced. And I I I think that's something that the city and the applicant really need to think about. Uh, since we can't solve the problem with a parking structure because of the high hazard area. You know, you it when you're turning all these different dials, the parking structure is just not an option. So um, the own, the other option is make the building, have the have fewer dwelling units. And therefore fewer cars. So I I I I wanted to, I wanted to put that on the table as something that I would be, um, I think is worth uh looking at.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone want to go next, or I can certainly take a pass at it. John, go ahead.
Yeah, just to uh respond to Sarah's uh thoughts about parking. I, it's not clear to me what, how how many students have cars. Whether the proportion of students who have cars or uh is the same as the proportion of. Uh, folks in the in the general population, I think that would be, you know, that should be possible to obtain some statistics about that. And and learn more. Um, I'm I'm certainly open to the possibility. That one way to deal with uh potential parking problems is to diminish the number of uh folks living there. But it seems like that's uh, that's a pretty inefficient way of of addressing it. I would say that one other option is actually to consider structured, you know, a parking building. Say one of the buildings that's now allocated to uh apartments would be devoted to to parking. Uh, if if that is a a major issue, but I'm I'm not convinced that it is. Uh, and so I'm more willing to 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 think about the request for diminished parking. Uh, in the project than than you are, I guess. Uh, I'm I'm open to that.
Thanks, John. Um, well, I'd love to weigh in if I could and then Georgie. Um, so uh, yeah, I'll just propose a third path, which is um to uh. Really um focus in the transportation management plan on uh how to address. Uh, the concerns that students would would have more cars than can be accommodated in this parking reduction and really address it well. Some parking, I'm glad to hear, is being is being planned. Uh, so um, the cost uh will certainly come into play. Uh, and how the um, how the overflow into other areas will be discouraged and prohibited will be very important. Uh, but I think that um in today's. Uh but I think that um in today's world, um young people are adapting to the the idea of not having uh cars more and more. And I uh I know not all of them will do that, and some of them will be wealthy enough to afford to buy their spaces and all that kind of stuff. But uh but I I do think that the management plan can um can address a lot of this in order to make us more comfortable uh with the parking reduction. I'll go ahead and continue on the uh key issue two, and then, you know, of course, everybody else went, please, but um the um I'm really uh pretty happy with the new connections to the north. I think they're great. Uh I think that um the one in the center especially uh should uh feel kind of not open and uh and accommodating and have a lot of nice public amenities along it. Uh the uh to make it just feel like an open uh thing, so don't, you know, hopefully not too narrow and with a lot of uh a lot of open field, public field. Uh but in general, I think this is a huge improvement. Uh and um I um I'll go ahead and talk about activating the north side. I do think that um it would be good to uh to do some uh planning to have that north side activated. Hope um I realize that right now it is facing the back of a mall. Uh but um but it is a, you know, having a connection through there, uh it's an opportunity. So um I did see the, you know, the glass uh fronts and everything, so uh I think that you're thinking about that, but I would support uh some additional activation there. I do agree that um activation along the uh Twenty-Eighth Street side is probably not as important, given the parking lot. Uh but um while we're on the parking lot, I think that uh I'll just say, take some clues maybe from the CU areas to the south. There's some really cool wall walls with artwork embedded in them, leading to the underpass. And there there are some things to try to make it look nice when it isn't a building. Uh so things that like landscaping and trees and maybe public art that can uh be visible from Twenty-Eighth Street. Georgie's totally correct. I mean, as you drive in, that's uh that it's not nice to see a big giant parking lot. So if we can do things to to address that, I think that would be, that would be really useful. Other comments?
Okay, um so um, yeah, I'm I'm spending a lot of time on the the aerial of this site. And um thinking about the parking and you know, the one, the the one thing that that I I and 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 I would love for someone to correct me if I'm wrong. I don't see a lot of opportunity for parking spillover because it appears to be not really any opportunities for people to do spillover into other neighborhoods. I could be completely wrong. Um if that is the case, I uh like John said, I I'm not terribly concerned about the 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 parking reduction. But uh as I mentioned before, I think this is an opportunity for people to skinny down on cars and skinny down in space and create more dorm style living in a same kind of square footage. Um and really and really cater to those people that are willing to sacrifice their vehicles to be in a place of close proximity. To be in a more affordable kind of location if this wasn't luxury student apartments. Because my concern is, is that the way this is designed is we are going to get a lot of cars because you're designing luxury student housing. And these are the people, I think one of the comments that I, these are the people with the Merks and the BMWs and and those students coming in. I I would be much more compelled to reduce the parking requirement um to what the applicant is proposing, or even further if there was true dorm style living here where we could accommodate many more students and reduce the pressure on Boulder and create an affordable model for CU's, and CU doesn't appear to want to build their own dorms for their own students. So that that's my comment. I I could be wrong on the spillover. Um so um look forward to investigating that further. Um I also completely agree with David relative to, I think the connections are neat. Um I I agree the activation on the north side would be a a a a nice opportunity and and hopefully not just dead space um the next time we see it around. Um and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgie. Lupita?
Thank you, Georgia, because really that's kind of like what I was, I I was hoping for, some ideas that will make me feel better about this opportunity. Um a- and and I think that 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 may be a good option, the idea of making this more of a dorm-like, which many colleges have, where the housing is more affordable and, you know, there's more equity in terms of what people can use. And I have a college kid now that lives in a dorm. And it is, uh you know, very subtle, yeah, un- understated kind of space uh where those big differences in income um are not so um pronounced. So I think that maybe, maybe this is one way that I think you, this this will kind of solve multiple problems for the city, you know, that that we do need that housing. But it also, it will not aggravate what I think the differences that they have, they have not. And so uh presumably can make things uh better for people, even if the university itself doesn't want to make that difference. That the city can push on our own little ways to make it more affordable. At least on the living side. Thank you for the ideas.
Thank you, Lupita. Anyone else key issue two? Okay, Sarah, you want to add something?
I just want to note that the uh staff noted that there was nothing in the um proposal about bicycle parking. And that there's a significant, they what's, if I read it correctly, staff said you're going to need to provide, and it was some very large number of um bicycle uh spots, and it's not clear to me where that will go in this very cramped site. So I think that that's an important um element that we should not forget. I mean, I know staff won't forget it, but it deserves to be mentioned.
And and I'll just add that, yeah, I I assume that we we could use existing parking lot space uh in the um conveyance and uh and high hazard zone uh and convert it to bicycle parking, hopefully, uh since it's already used for parking. So, yeah, that absolutely will need to see that. Lisa? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, um. I hope I'm saying this under the right um heading, but but I just wanted to say that that's something that when I think of Millennium, Millennium Harvest House over the years and what it's been over time, um it has provided substantial community benefit. So, you know, we've talked a lot about the tennis courts and the tennis center, but you know, it also served as a conference center, which we're getting new ones in in the city, and um it had a very nice restaurant that um hosted many events and weddings and things alike, and a pool that would be opened up for various events. And so I do think this is an appropriate site inconsistent um with what we need in terms of student housing, but it's a little hard to see us losing so much space that had been private but also open to the public. So I would just encourage um the applicant as they move through uh various stages, looking at to, you know, look for opportunities. I know there was discussion of a cafe, um and we certainly touched on where we'd like to see commercial at the floor level, but I am my my, in my dreams, we would have um some more spaces that that would remain in some way, shape or form, shareable with the public, even if they're private, you know, rentable or otherwise usable. Because it's a really valuable parcel and a really accessible location, um and to see so much of it shift into the private realm is challenging.
Thank you, Lisa. All right. Well, and I'm sure I'm, we'll probably discuss a little more of that in key issue four as well um uh with the uh the design character and usability. Um so why don't we go ahead and move into key issue three, which is the height mass and scale to propose buildings compatible with the character of the area? Go ahead, John.
Okay, well, uh I think this is, this is the part where uh I I I am most dismayed with what we've been presented with, and I recognize that what we're looking at here is is really just volumes and not uh not the architecture that uh will define it in some way. But I think there were some very good comments by um Mr. Shapens and Mr. Culls tonight. Uh Mr. Shapens in an email uh in which they provided some suggestions that would make it much more attractive. Um and I think the the problem is that in building a massive, these massive buildings that are connected, it's a, it's pretty hard to avoid making it just look like a prison. Uh and and that's the challenge for architects to accomplish what they want in terms of utilization and make it look good at the same time. But uh I would say that the the proposal by by Mr. Culls uh to have wider uh courtyards between the wings of the buildings would go a long way to making it look more attractive. And it could be that each each building should be separate, that there shouldn't be single buildings with these wings, two or three wings on each one, uh but have smaller, separate buildings that uh that might make it more attractive.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I um actually, I'll just go ahead and um uh throw it out the uh in this key issue right away. Um the uh how does the board feel about a strong recommendation that Design Advisory Board look at this proposal uh before site review? I think um this, I I think it's a very important uh project that the DAB should be taking a look at. So can we just send that signal? Great. All right. And with that, I'll let somebody else weigh in on key issue three. And I'm certainly willing to go. Um I will say that I do, um I do think that the height the height uh variance is is totally um okay in this area uh with um uh with affordable housing uh benefits. So I I don't have any problem with that. I like the stepping down on the creek side. Uh I think that maybe additional stepping down could be considered because you could have some kind of cool little rooftop decks on each level, perhaps. I agree that the with uh with what uh John was saying, um with uh the comments that were sent in uh from both Macon and Jerry. Uh I think that we need to be really careful about those courtyards being too narrow. And I'll even loop back to what Georgie was saying about the dormitory style, you know, that if we did have some mix of dormitory styles with with smaller uh square footage needs for dwelling units uh with shared uh dining facilities and stuff, um it might create opportunities for a different layout um and and still have the number of uh people living there. So even if not, but even if the whole property weren't dorms, if it were a mix of the two, uh there there's some interesting ideas there. So I love, I love some of the creative things that have come out tonight with regards to that and how it might help with that. Um I realize that this is uh this is still kind of like block diagrams in a concept review, and it it did kind of jar me a little bit, uh that it looked kind of institutional, like you said. So we will be looking for um some good architectural work between now and site review. And um let's see, did I have anything else on that? That's about it. Who else would like to go? Sarah?
Um so uh I shared John's uh concerns and um I think David's proposal or ideas about maybe mixing in some dorm style um uh units so that uh you could actually make the building smaller. Uh would be, uh and more, perhaps more affordable, would be great. But I I actually, I want to point out a a a broader con- contextual issue, which is, you know, every time we provide, the city provides a variance on height limits, it changes the character of the area and makes variances on height limits all that much more likely in new developments. And so I realize that this is, we're going to get a community benefit. If if they go to fifty-five feet, we'll get a community benefit out of it. But every time we, the a project uh this big comes to us and they go, well, the surrounding area, there's this tall building and that tall building. It's because we gave variances to those tall buildings ten or twenty or thirty years ago. And so it ends up, you know, it just keeps pushing everything up above the height limit. And I I just, I just want to raise that as a as a sort of overarching challenge to these discussions, because it's very hard to go back to, well, the BT one height limit is thirty-five feet, but the surrounding buildings, which are now non then maybe, maybe now with the fifty-five, the lift of Appendix Jane, maybe now they're conforming, but it it just creates a every time we give a variance, we we undermine our code. And the solution is to change the code, not to keep giving variances. And I get, I just wanted to say that. It doesn't have to do with this project in particular, but that's what this project made me think about.
And can I just, um, I I I think maybe, um, I've probably misspoke. I I don't think the use of variance is exactly right here. Um it is a re- request to go above the thirty-five foot height limit that is actually allowed in our code. So um but, you know, I, but that doesn't mean to, I don't mean to under un- undermine your points or anything, but um but but I I I do also want to point out that the original height limits were fifty-five feet and that we've imposed thirty-five feet over the years. But um but the I, you know, again, um the the existing building too is also in that fifty, sixty.
No, I understand, I understand.
But yeah, I I don't mean to argue. I just, I want to clarify, um, you know, since I set up, set that up. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead. Do you want to go take a pass at it, Sarah? Okay, cool. Uh anyone else on on uh key issue three? Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, yeah, I I think overall the proposed building height, given what's what's there, although again, this is not to undermine what Sarah said, because I think that's an excellent point as well, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. Um for this particular site, um I think, given what's already there and that it's on Twenty-Eighth Street and, you know, a lot of what's around it, I'm I'm comfortable with the height. Um I'm sure that we'll see this when it comes back, but I would love to see more varied roofline. Um I think one of the things that is, and I know it's challenging, because you're trying to optimize the space you can build and up to the height limit that we allow you. But, you know, I just, I I think one of the things that um is most monolithic and um perhaps aesthetically and attractive about certain buildings that have gone up around the city, including, I would argue, along the Twentieth Quarter and nearby, um is just these very flat roof lines that just have no personality to them. So um to the extent possible, I'd love to see some variation on along the refine when it comes back. And I realize these are just massing studies. Um and um I agree with, with, I I like that we're kind of restoring the street grid, um and I hope that we do that in a way that is usable and attractive and and looks ahead to what might change in the future. Um I'm always a fan of restoring street grids. And um I share um David's express sadness that the original nineteen fifty's building was ever modified, because I wish we could landmark that thing, but it's gone. Um, you know, and and I I don't think it's a at this point, it's not a terribly well built or terribly safe or terribly well utilized building. So I am very excited that for uh we see something coming forward on this site, and I look forward to seeing um more defined architectural ideas uh when it returns.
Thank you. Um I see Peter's hand up and then Georgie, I think you wanted to go. Peter?
Despite the fact that we don't have a lot of architectural detail, the applicant made common, a lot of reference to the first floor glass approach, which I like, and I want to see more of. And I think that kind of Mies van der Rohe echo works well with the building that's being torn down. So it was nice to see that, and there were echoes, as John mentioned, of the Hotel Hill. I'm putting it in a okay way, in a good way. I like that permeability on the ground floor, and I like the approach they were indicating already in the concept plan. Definitely softened the reaction to what looked like, you know, a giant prison building with fingers reaching down to suck the water out of the creek. Um and I do worry about the narrowness and the canyons of the sun blazing across the sky and hitting those shit, hitting those uh spaces in shadow, all but for that few moments. I'm okay with the height here, and obviously I feel echoes of uh Dagno. The Plaza, given that we've got this shopping center behind us, that I'm certain that'll always be what it is, but we never know. And so I would like to see more uh attention paid to that side, because that could be the next pedestrian Pearl Street and uh within the useful life of this project as it goes. that could be the next pedestrian Pearl Street and within the useful life of this project as it goes up as powers that be decide that shopping center or that grocery store is going to change or it's going to begin to face the front of the street, which means we'll have an entirely different thing going on in Rappahoe and 28th. And as far as the height, I for me, because of what was there and what's going in, and I like the step down, I would encourage more step down. I really liked whoever talked about the terrace opportunity for terraces. So excited to see more detail. I know it'll come from this team. Looking forward to it.
Thanks, Peter.
A few comments. I agree with Peter in general, everything you just said, so I won't repeat any of it. I also want to acknowledge Sarah's point regarding heights and things like that. I think in this scenario with the existing building, it's not something that I'm particularly concerned about, especially if we can get an abundance of housing for the students. I'm not convinced the current site layout is the only site layout that is possible to achieve the developers' goals and potentially even save that tennis bubble. Because as I look at the site in the 100 year floodplain, the surface parking, there is surface parking in that 100 years floodplain where it is, I think, buildable. And I think with some creative design, the developer might be able to get close to what they're trying to achieve from a square footage standpoint and still maintain that bubble. And so I would like at minimum a, a, a real deep explanation and exploration of something like that to accommodate a community. Because I, I'm concerned that I, 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 I thought that the talk about, okay, where do we put this tennis facility if it's not there? I, I just don't know if we have that capacity as Boulder to relocate this in the time period that those people need to keep those businesses and those activities alive for that entire community. So I would challenge the developer that there may be opportunities to achieve their objectives and try to save that by, 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 by taking another look at how, how this thing is cited.
Lisa?
Um, yeah, I'm just going to say a couple more things about tennis that I think we may have seen show up in emails, perhaps did not hear in public comment. And that is that this is one, this is, I think, the only publicly available indoor courts in the city. Meadows is private. The country club is private. Neither one of them allow people to come in as day users, I think currently, or perhaps you have to be a guest of a member. I think that's huge. The adaptive and disabled programming that's provided is huge. The way that it serves the youth tennis community specifically, not just for Boulder, but for the state of Colorado and for the region is really, really important. It's one of the only places you can see people who are maybe looking at eventually going pro or trying to make it on the circuits, you know, playing. And then I also agree that, and I would be happy for MTC, you know, over time to find another location. I know they've worked on that. I think they were looking at Louisville at one point and other spots. And if they can find something more power to them, and if this is kind of the impetus for that, great. But it's very centrally located. I mean, you can literally bike there or walk there from a lot of places or bus there. And that makes it much more accessible. I, I just, I, I hate the thought of losing this thing that, you know, anybody, any, any kid or adult or someone looking for adaptive sports, you know, can engage with this program and then it's gone. And you know, I don't see how it gets replaced. And unfortunately Meadows Country Club, City of Boulder, CU don't have facilities. And finally, CU Women's Tennis uses these courts. And I do not know what is going to happen to CUU and women's tennis if they lose the courts, particularly the winter ones. So I also don't want to support, you know, some unsafe structure that's going to kill people. That would be bad. You know, but I, but I'd like us to just explore, you know, what, what are the hazards? What are the dangers? What's the seasonality of it? What kinds of behavior do we anticipate? Water might do even in the event of a flood that far down. You know, and is there some way to just not touch, you know, some of those areas? Maybe not all the courts. I know only five are covered by the bubble. Maybe put some money into resurfacing the court south of the creek. If we lose some up north. But we lose more than just tennis courts, you know, it's a community benefit.
Right, Lisa. And Sarah, and we are kind of creeping into key issue four, so we can kind of gently start to move into there if we want, which is is the space appropriate in design character and usability for primary users on the site. So go ahead, Sarah.
I just want to support wholeheartedly what Lisa just said. And I've been looking at the, in the Boulder, this is going back to item one, but Boulder Valley Comp Plan, when it defines regional centers, talks a great deal about having regional centers having distinctive function and characters and providing a wide range of activities with sustained and, and then it talks about sustainable urban form definitions, which includes daily needs met within easy access and a quality of life that attracts, sustains and retains diverse businesses, comfortable, safe, attractive places to live, work and learn, and welcoming, accessible, public gathering places. And I think both of those, both the sustainable urban form definition and the definition of regional centers reinforces what Lisa, the points that Lisa just made. And I just wanted to add that.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, and I'll support what, what Sarah and Lisa just said too. But I wanted to also make the point that if in, in the discussion of allowing an additional floor for community benefit, it seems to me that this location is one of the least offensive places for allowing that additional floor for community benefit of any place we're likely to find in the city. Because there's no immediate, you know, single family ground floor residences in the, in the immediate vicinity that are likely to be affected. So it seems to me that if, and I'm not pushing for it, but I'm saying that this is the sort of location where I think a reasonable discussion can take place about whether that should happen or not, then I'm, I'm willing to consider it.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'm so glad that you brought that up, John, because I feel that way too, that this is a site where particularly if it meant that we were able to preserve certain uses, like the tennis courts, like having an onsite daycare, you know, like still providing some kind of, you know, public space or meaningful restaurant more than just a cafe. I would also, you know, and I would want to be guided by staff and look at the site plan and all that, but I, at this point, I would very much entertain, you know, potentially going higher and a bit higher, you know, if we got meaningful community benefit onsite. I think it's important to voice that to the applicant, because so much of the time that's not something that will entertain. And I'd love to hear from other, other board members and see if, if we have some, and obviously this is just the current board members. But you know, I, along 28th street in that location with appropriate step downs and well-designed, I personally wouldn't be bothered, you know, by something a bit higher.
Higher than 55 feet? Is what we're talking about?
I would ask John how he feels about that. I'd like to really look at the site and see what the angles are, but I'm, I'm open.
Because that's not something our code allows.
No variance, but, but 55, I don't know, whatever we can get in there. I, I am open to it. I don't want it to be something that towers over. I don't enjoy some of the buildings that are built in the 60s and 70s that are truly out of scope. But what they're asking for, I'm very comfortable with. And to the extent that we have ways within code to provide variance, or we can kick things up to council if it's designed well, I'm very open.
Just to clarify, I'm, I'm okay with the additional floor that they're asking for, but not more than that.
Thank you. And then let's just go ahead and continue on key issue four. I'd just like to, I, you know, I just want to make sure that I reiterate that I hear, I absolutely agree with all of the concerns about the role that the tennis courts play for the community and the desire to make sure that that gets addressed. I want to reiterate that I don't feel that having them, but the, the creek path, the way they do is the ideal thing. And especially the ones on the north, I don't, I would love to see us find a way to be able to accommodate that use without, and, and maybe go ahead and get, get that bubble out of there because it is right, right up, it is in the high hazard zone and it's, and it butts right up against where we're all going along and in a way that's not exactly inviting. So I don't, I wouldn't consider that a loss if we could figure out some other solution. So not, I do want to reiterate that it's very, it's very important to, to try to address the needs of, of, of the tennis community, but, but I would not consider it a loss if we found a different, a different way to do that with that. And, and we could get rid of those, those bubbles on the north side and have a, a more, have, have the creek path kind of go through there and we readdress the, the side of the creek and all that and have, have a more open feel towards housing and other uses. So I just want to make sure that, that there is a diversity of opinion on that. Go ahead, Lisa.
So to Georgie's point, which I appreciated, on maybe trying to get a little more density of housing, you know, making it more dorm style or shared. And I guess looking at, I don't know, I can't remember if we maxed out FAR, you know, or something else, but I, I, yeah, I, I agree. I see your point, David, and I certainly don't want to promote something that's an issue for health, safety and public welfare. But if we're going to put student housing on a site, which we are, and I think is a great use for the site, that's fine. I'd just be curious, you know, how, how can we kind of maximize the site in a way that isn't an eyesore? And that allows us to pursue some things around community benefit, around public use space, around safety as we look at more frequent flooding and all of that stuff and have to be aware of it. You know, and I'm not necessarily looking for blockier design, but, but, but I, my feeling is, you know, sending back to the applicant would just be, you know, how, how can you maximize the site without making it terrible, maybe even making it more attractive as you come into Boulder along 28? You know, and making it more accessible to a range of students and still meet your pro forma, you know, does it have to be luxury student housing or can we go a different direction?
Great. So I think we're firmly in key issue four territory now. Anyone who hasn't spoken in a while want to speak up? I think we've covered a lot of key issue four, actually, in our first three key issues. We've kind of crept into the character and the user, the uses, but, and the design. Peter?
I think I will reiterate and put it back here around the management plan for this pretty amazing public-private opportunity that looks great on paper, but I think that they owe us a, a good plan here on how this, this pretty ambitious public-private space, which I applaud, is going to actually be managed so that it is a true asset as they intended to be.
I think that's really well said. And actually, the 3D rendering that we had during the applicant presentation kind of helped me feel like we're moving a little bit more in a direction of understanding what it would look like than we did from the packet. So I, I actually really appreciated that. So I would be looking at in that space near the, where the path arcs through that rather than, like I think somebody from the public said, where kids throw frisbees or whatever, that, that we see maybe some inspiring, kind of interesting things that it would be used for beyond that to, to help us under, to help us feel like we've taken a step into creating something that is true to the historic public use of that really beautiful niche of our community. Other comments? All right, well, I think though, that there's been some really great feedback from what I can see. Danica and Rob and the team. I hope this has been useful. I hope you took a lot of notes. Any comments you'd like to make before we close up this item?
No, I think we appreciate the attention that you gave this project. And you know, as I mentioned, it's concept plan and so your feedback was very important. We appreciate it. We have some problems to solve. And we're bumping up against some code and regulation. So I think, you know, we'll continue to work with staff and uncover and unpack that as we can. And, you know, we appreciate your attention. And I don't know, Rob, do you have anything to add or?
No, nothing to add for me. Again, thank everyone for their time and the discussion was very helpful and look forward to moving this along and responding to your comments. So thank you again.
Thank you. And Chris? Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, thank you for the great discussion and all of the thought that you've put into this proposal and we'll go back to work.
All right. Well, we'll be looking forward to seeing the next phase of this come forward. And thank you all so much for everything. And thanks to Sloan and staff for, for your involvement with this item.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to Sloan as well. So I appreciate her time and all of staff's time that are behind the scenes. So thank you and we'll see you next time.
All right. Great. Okay. Well, with that, then we'll go ahead and close agenda item 5A. This is probably a good time to take another short break. So where are we at time wise here? It's 11:50 where I am, but only 9:50 where you are. Let's go till two minutes to the hour, take a seven minute break I think we're at fifty-eight after the hour. Welcome back, everybody.
I'm trying to get back in, but uh, the host won't let me.
Ah, you, um, Cindy is now being host, so Cindy, if you could promote John, that would be great.
I'm here, but I'm eating, so I'm gonna leave my, my.
Okay, I'm back. I'm back.
Great, there you are. Yeah, they, um, I'm just really happy that the internet problem we had at the beginning wasn't on my side. I am calling, when I, when I come in from another part of the country, I always feel like I'm misbehaving a little bit. We didn't used to be able to do that. And now with virtual meeting, we can call in from anywhere.
Unauthorized field trip.
Yeah, which actually, industry matters, we may want to discuss because I hear uh, the council is going back to hybrid in person, so, mm-hmm. Anyway, let's go to agenda item 5B.
Do not get excited, David.
I think it's a one-time final meeting thing.
Oh, all right, I won't get excited. Uh, is everybody back? We have uh, Sarah, are you there? Let's see.
Sarah's there, she's just eating. I'm gonna be eating as well, so I'll briefly disappear just so you don't have to watch me eat.
All right.
I can enjoy my milk in front of you.
Go right ahead. All right, I actually grabbed a few bites at certain.
That's a peanut, who has peanuts?
We have our, we have our calorie needs. All right, um, so um, let's go ahead and start agenda item 5B, public hearing and recommendation to city council regarding, regarding ordinance 8514, which proposes to amend Title IX land use code to add new conditional use standards related to oil and gas operations. We got an update on this a few weeks ago and uh, we now have an ordinance before us. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Charles and Carl to kick us off.
Thanks so much. Uh, good evening, chair members of the board. Um, Dave, as, as you mentioned, as, as the board may recall, staff was before you last month under matters to introduce the proposed oil and gas regulations, uh, which have been in the works for some time now, so uh, we're pleased to be before you this evening with a comprehensive set of draft regulations, but before we begin, I'd like to mention that we're joined this evening by Elizabeth Peranias, uh, senior partner at Delone Law, who's an industry expert in oil and gas regulations who the city has retained to help support us in this process. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Carl Geiler. He'll be presenting staff's analysis this evening.
And on behalf of the board, I'll just want to welcome you, Elizabeth. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Charles. Um, good evening, board members. Uh, you'll recall, we, we talked about oil and gas regulations briefly on October second, uh, seventh, excuse me. So uh, the presentation tonight is fairly similar to what I had presented on the other night, but I thought given the, the amount of information that's required with this and, and it'd be a good refresher to go through everything again, so um, just to remind the board, there's been a moratorium on drilling applications in the city of Boulder uh, for, for several years. Uh, but that moratorium is set to expire on December thirty-first of this year, so our goal has been to try to get uh, the oil and gas regulations adopted in, in our land use code uh, before that moratorium expires. And as we talked about last time, there's uh, very few properties that would actually be eligible in the city of Boulder based on the uh, two thousand-foot setback that we're proposing in the ordinance, which is derived from uh, some of the state regulations and their studies that were done at the state level. Uh, so I'm gonna cover some of that tonight as part of the staff presentation. Uh, following the presentation, um, again, Charles mentioned that Elizabeth Peranias is with us, uh, will be available to answer questions to the best of our abilities. Like I said, city staff uh, is not necessarily experts in the realm of, of oil and gas, but we've learned a lot uh, in the last few months and, and over a year now. Um, but obviously Elizabeth is more of a technical expert that can uh, help us. And she's been working with uh, Boulder County and the development of, of their regulations in the city of Lafayette as well. So we'll take questions from the board after that and then following that, there'll be a public hearing. Um, if anyone wanted to speak to it, and then planning board would provide a recommendation on the ordinance to city council. So just jumping into the background again, um, we provided links within the memo that talk about um, what hydraulic fracturing is or fracking. I think everyone is fairly familiar uh, with fracking. The, basically, these large-scale drills can go into the ground uh, with pretty significant depth and can drill for several miles, um, I think like two to three miles. And this is kind of a growing phenomenon in, in this, in the state of Colorado and because of the uh, growth of drilling in Colorado, it's regulated at the state level predominantly by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission or COGCC. Um, it's grown significantly in the front range in recent years. Um, so this is what's um, led to some of the moratoria in other communities as well as Boulder. But just talking hypothetically, how would an oil and gas uh, application be addressed in the current code? Say there wasn't a moratorium. How does our code currently address it? So Boulder currently has no specific zoning right, regulations on oil and gas regulations. What we have is a definition for mining industries and that does include oil and gas, but it's a, it's a, it basically encompasses a number of different ways of mineral extraction, so it didn't, when it was developed, it wasn't really um, that prevalent of a phenomenon in, in the area. Um, it is an allowed use through use review um, into zones in the city of Boulder, so the industrial manufacturing zone and the agricultural zone. So say an application were to come in for oil and gas under the current code, it would be under mining industries, it would require a use review and it would only be evaluated against the existing use review criteria that are in the code. So clearly, the code is not set up to um, address the, the potential impacts from oil and gas, so that's why we're working on on this ordinance. So efforts to ban oil and gas drilling have been legally challenged on the front range. In response to these applications, we've seen a lot of moratoria uh, be enacted. I think the city of Boulder is one into effect in 2013. Uh, as I noted before, it would expire at the end of this year on December thirty-first. And during the moratoria, basically, this was to enable other communities to um, develop regulations that would help protect public health, safety and welfare. Uh, and that also includes the environment and wildlife. And some of these moratoria were going on while the, the state was doing the rulemaking process to figure out how to better address oil and gas operations. Um, so that concluded with the enactment of the Senate Bill nineteen dash one eight one. Um, this particular bill um, gave local governments much more authority in the regulation and mitigation of potential impacts from oil and gas. So it was a big step uh, for the state of Colorado. What it specifies is that, you know, it does talk about specific nuisance-related impacts that I'll talk about that, um, this, the cities and communities and counties would have the ability to regulate and mitigate for, but the rules have to be reasonable and they have to only apply to surface, surface impacts. The COGCC is what regulates the subsurface impacts. So there's been a number of jurisdictions that have had oil and gas regulations on the books for several years uh, or some going back decades, but these, a lot of these jurisdictions have been updating their regulations to respond to this new state legislation that gives local governments more authority. So some examples are Boulder County and Erie um, at the end of last year, excuse me, and then Commerce City, Brewfield, um, in early uh, of this year, uh, Lafayette just adopted their new regulations, actually on Monday, I believe. I mean, it looks like uh, Westminster is also in the adoption uh, process as well. Um, and you look at some of these other jurisdictions, we put some links in the memo, you'll see that there's a lot of similarities uh, between the jurisdictions and what kind of requirements they have, what kind of criteria they have. There's a lot of best practices that each, you know, jurisdiction is sharing with each other relative to this. So I talked about this last time briefly, there was a report that was done, um, that was um, conducted by a consultant, I think, working for the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that assessed potential airborne impacts from oil and gas facilities and what it found, and this is in 2019, um, that there even two thousand feet away from oil and gas well pads, there were still like measurable, detectable impacts um, from oil and gas operations. So this has led to um, a lot of communities enacting two thousand-foot setbacks from oil and gas operations from residential units, schools, daycare centers, senior care facilities, hospitals and parks. Um, so we've, we've gone down that road as well. So when you look at the city of Boulder and, and, and that two thousand-foot setback from those uses, you can see that the vast majority of the city would become ineligible. There are some areas in the industrial manufacturing and agricultural zones, again, the same zones where, where mining industries are currently allowed through the use of the process. But you can see that the, the small amount of green up in that flagpole that goes to gun barrel would be an, an area where potentially could be eligible as well as some of the purple areas up by IBM. And over by fifty-fifth, again, very small areas um, based on this setback. So one thing I, I can mention is that we've obviously been looking to uh, Boulder County um, as the best analog for the city of Boulder to look at and, and adopt as regulations. We feel that Boulder County's regulations are comprehensive and with respect to how they regulate air quality and the nuisance impacts like impacts to soil, odor, noise. It just makes sense to have consistency between the county and the city, since a lot of these properties are, are adjacent to county properties anyway. Um, Lafayette is also um, staying fairly close to the Boulder County regs. So we feel that it makes sense to just have coordination between the county uh, and Lafayette so that we can share resources or advice um, and have some regu- regulatory alignment between the jurisdictions. So some of the things that we see, you know, fairly broadly through these state or these, I'm sorry, these city or county regs is the pre-application requirement, neighborhood meetings, um, a special review requirement, which is similar to our use review. Um, the requirement for studies, the, the evaluation criteria are all fairly similar between the jurisdictions, planning board and city council decisions on oil and gas as well as the two thousand-foot setbacks. So I'm just gonna jump into just the content of the regulations and, and I covered this last time real quick, so uh, we have new updated definitions in the code, so what we're proposing to do is actually update the mining industry's definition and remove the references to oil and gas and make that distinct from oil and gas operations since it, they would be different in how they would apply. The mining industries wouldn't be as, as a, more, as a prevalent use. So we're gonna create a new definition for oil and gas regulations and add a new line item in the use table. They'll be regulated similarly with the use review requirement, except that the oil and gas operations would have a whole new section that, that's attached to the memo. So there's new technical definitions associated with oil and gas that we've added uh, to the ordinance. Uh, there's the addition of oil and gas in the table. Again, it would be a use review it, on a particular site if that two thousand-foot buffer was met. There'd be a requirement for a pre-application before they submit. There'd be a requirement for good neighbor meetings with any use review. Um, similar to the county, there's a geophysical exploration permit or what they call seismic testing. This is probably pretty limited and uh, you may not see it in the city of Boulder, but there are cases where an applicant may try to create vibrations in the land or use aircraft technology to figure out where the oil is under the surface. So this would actually be a land use review to even do this and it would be subject to planning board call-up um, as it's crafted, which is the same as Boulder County. And then if they move forward and opt to do um, any drilling activities, it would require a use review. And there, there's a whole new section that's proposed in the ordinance uh, that would relate to that, which I'll talk about now. So if you go into chapter nine six of the code, that's where all the specific conditional use regulations are located. These regulations, as you can see from the packet, are very lengthy. There's, there's a lot of considerations. It's like probably close to or probably exceeding fifty pages. Uh, given that we're probably not going to see this too often in the city of Boulder, um, we're proposing that we add it at the end of chapter nine six. Um, so that it doesn't, you know, clutter up any of the other use table regulations, so we're moving that uh, to the end and one section becomes reserved because of that. Uh, we're proposing a public notice that would go to all properties, all renters, all addresses within one mile of the site. There's the requirements for a written statement that has to go into kind of the financial. that has to go into kind of the financial fitness of the applicant, their insurance and liability, whether there's been any enforceable violations at the state level that the city should be aware of. There's a lot of plan requirements to assess for impacts and these are all pretty consistent with other jurisdictions. So the first, uh, looks like seven bullet points in the required plans are pretty similar to what we already require through site review. If a site is large enough, it also could be eligible for site review. So there might actually be an accompanying site review application based on the size of the site. But either way, there would, there would be these plan requirements as part of the use review. After the outdoor lighting plan, most of those requirements are pretty typical of oil and gas applications. So a land use analysis, dust suppression plan, electrification plan, these are all things that are pretty standard in oil and gas applications and would be more than what you see in a typical site review application. And again, to assess for those nuisance related impacts, there would be a lot of studies that would be required that the applicant would have to provide with expert analysis and there would have to be third party reviews. The city can't be expected to be, you know, expert on all of these. So there's going to be third party reviews that would advise the city and all of this would be at the expense of the applicant, they would be responsible for covering all of this in terms of the cost. And there would be independent parties that would advise the city. So there's the air quality report, odor plans, noise and vibration studies, all these different nuisance related things would be looked at in detail and we would be relying on these experts to make recommendations to us, and then we would bring this to planning board for decision. So this is something that I think is a lot like what was done, if you're familiar with, as the Hogan Pan Cost Project. There were some environmental concerns on that property and there were a lot of environmental studies that were required with that. So we had third party help on those reviews to, to make the recommendations. So I think any kind of application for oil and gas with a use review would be similar to that process. So since we talked to planning board last time, there are some changes that we've incorporated into the ordinance. It was mentioned, you know, we should look into, to reverse setbacks or negative setbacks. So we have added setback sections into the code in a number of places, particularly residential and industrial zone requirements, since those are closer to these potential sites. We've added that there would have to be a 2,000 foot setback from a well for any residential that's actually proposed in industrial areas or in any other areas that could get closer to a well pad. And we're also proposing for multi-well pads at that setback be 2,500. And that would be during what we call the pre-production and production phases. So that's like when they're actually building the access roads to the site, erecting the well pad, putting up the drill rig, drilling down, casing it, the holes with, with the concrete. All that phase would actually be where the most impacts would happen. So they would be, have to be a larger setback. And then that setback then would reduce down to 250 feet. In the case where they've already extracted all the oil and gas, removed it from the site and that those well sites have been capped and decommissioned according to the regulations that are in the, in the proposed ordinance. So that's how reverse setbacks typically work in other communities and we've incorporated that in the ordinance. Another thing about use reviews is they don't really expire if the use continues like a restaurant, you know, if they get an approval and they keep in operation, that use review is still valid unless they stop operation for one year. In this case, consistent with Boulder County, we're proposing that the expiration date of the use review approvals be 10 years. So if there is a drill that, that's going on for that long, that if, if after 10 years, they would have to come back in for another use review and it would have to be reassessed. And, and given, the reason that that's proposed is that there could be best, new best practices that could apply to mitigate for impacts that could be reevaluated each time they come in for their new approval. We've added some new technical definitions and fees since we last spoke. It was raised at the last meeting that we should have a definition for cumulative impacts. We've added that, we've defined the production and pre-production phases among some other definitions. We've also made some updates to the insurance coverage requirements based on consultation with our own city insurance experts. And again, we've been meeting with Elizabeth, who you'll talk to tonight, who's proposed some amendments, we're proposing a new notice requirement if, to let adjacent properties know if there's been a spill or a leak at one of these sites and that it's been properly cleaned up. We've added the 2,500 foot setback from multi-well sites based on that recommendation and also an exception process that would allow that to be reduced down to 2,000 if they show that they're mitigating the potential impacts appropriately to get down to 2,000. We're also proposing an alternative site analysis, which is something that Boulder County is doing and some other jurisdictions are doing. This would be part of the pre-application review. So they would have to demonstrate that they've looked at some other adjacent sites. And the attorney has also provided some language for clarity, changes in the ordinance, removal of some language that was redundant and removal of any language that might actually create preemption or conflict issues with the state law on this. So after this analysis, we feel that the proposed regs would be a significant step at, at protecting the public health, safety and welfare and also the environment and wildlife consistent with these Boulder Valley Converts of Plan policies. So we are recommending that planning board recommend approval of the ordinance. So the next slide, is the motion language, should the board agree? And I can come back to this if need be. Just wanted to talk about the steps moving forward. Again, our goal is to complete this before the moratorium expires. So in order to do that, we would be going to city council on November 16th for first reading. And we've returned to them for public hearing on December 14th. And we're going to be requesting that city council adopt the ordinance on emergency so that it goes into effect immediately prior to the moratorium expiration. So that's our plan moving forward and we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Carl and Elizabeth. It's so much work went into this and it's, I really am impressed with the things you've addressed since we saw this just a few weeks ago. So with that, let's just open it up to questions from planning board. John.
Thank you, I can't resist. So I have a, I, I think this is excellent and I'm, I'm glad we're moving ahead. I do have a couple of questions. One is the degree to which any of this is relevant for Boulder open space that's outside the city limits?
It is relevant and we've been working with open space. In fact, we are looking at potentially a second phase of this project into next year where they're looking to potentially adopt their own regulations on city owned open space lands in the county that, that would apply to those lands. So it would be basically continuation of this project that they're going to be working on.
So, but until they do it, is this, does this count on open, on open space outside city limits?
No, the county regs would apply to those, those properties. Again, there's a lot of alignment between the regulations, but there is interest on, from open space to have their own regulations that would apply to their own land. But most of what's in the land use code is really applying to, to land within the city limits. So that, that's why it's been deferred to another phase after this.
Okay, thank you.
Our, our timeline, obviously.
Yeah, all right. And then in the draft regs, and I have to confess, I, I have, I used to be on the county planning commission. So I dealt with a previous version of the county's regs on this matter. But in the, in the draft regs, I understand that the applicant has to provide a bunch of information to the city, including their, you know, past record of violations and so on. But to what degree does the city, can the city look at that record and decide that, that they should not get their permit from the city based on a record that it is unsatisfied with? Does the city actually have the option to deny a permit based on something that is in the record of the applicant?
I might ask Elizabeth or Hella to jump in, but I, I think there is a criterion that we're proposing that relates to the operations plan and that they have to have, you know, a safe record. So I think that that past history can play into whether or not that criterion's met, but is, is there any other thoughts on that one?
Well, I, oh, go ahead, please.
Thanks, I'm happy to weigh in. So I definitely think that the operator's record, both in terms of their safety record, their compliance record, and also their ability to demonstrate that they have the financial resources necessary to comply with the city's rules and also to comply. And that, that would include any decommissioning or abandonment, which is part of the city's authority. So all of those factors are important in assessing whether or not the operator can actually comply with these regulations, which require the operator to, you know, take a number of steps to both avoid adverse impacts and also to minimize and mitigate them. So I absolutely think that financial fitness, compliance record, safety record, those are all very relevant factors to be considered.
So, so the city can use its discretion in these matters and come to different conclusions than COGCC?
Um, yes, because you have your own regulations. COGCC is applying its regulations. They are not the same as the city's regulations. They have different authority and, you know, they certainly, for example, they do review an operator's financial assurances to make sure that the operator has the ability to comply with their rules and that includes plugging and abandonment. But their review is, is based on their statutory authority and their rules, which again, do differ from, from the, from the cities.
Oh, okay, well, that's great news because we've been reading a lot about inadequate bonds and the state being a little bit too relaxed on what they're requiring in that respect. So, so you're saying that we do have discretion? And so Carl, I guess back to you. Is this something that, for example, it'll come, an application will come to planning board with a long list of, you know, of, of these documents that will have been supplied? And some, sometimes there'll be some, some assistance from experts helping, helping the planning board to interpret this and providing some guidance. And on some things, the planning board will have to make its own decision, I presume, without that assistance. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, ultimately, just like any other application, the board has to take all the information that's presented to them and found within the packet and then run through the, the criteria and look at each of them and determine whether the board thinks that each of the criteria are met. That could result in, you know, certain conditions that might get applied to, to mitigate something or it might be that maybe the application doesn't, you know, meet a particular criterion because of a potential impact.
Okay, and so it, it had been my understanding, but maybe I'm wrong. It would be great to be corrected that the, the state deals with all the underground concerns and that the city and county can only deal with the, what happens on the surface.
That's correct.
So I'm trying to understand, there's also some statements there about what happens, A, if there's a spill and B, that there's some opportunity to put controls on what fluids and so on, the drillers use in their drilling underground. And so I, I'm trying to understand how that relates to the state requirements and arrangements and responsibilities.
I'm, I'm happy to, to take that one. So there is a distinction between local authority and the state authority with respect to surface impacts. So that's the critical component. So the local authority is to regulate the surface impacts. So there can be downhole activities. So for example, the, the chemicals that are used during hydraulic fracturing, while those chemicals are used in a downhole operation, they're also transported on the surface, they're stored on the surface, they can spill on the surface. So there absolutely can be surface impacts that stem from improper use or improper transfer or improper disposal of chemicals that are used in downhole operations. And the city also has explicit authority to regulate water quality. And so, you know, certainly if those chemicals were to impact adversely the city's water quality, that would be something that the city has authority over as well. So, you know, it's not always a very bright line as to what regulating downhole activity and what regulating surface impacts is, there's, there's going to be some potential areas of overlap. But what I would say is, what the city has done with these regulations is, you know, attempt to utilize our clear authority to regulate surface impacts in every instance that we have that. And then to, you know, make calls as to whether or not regulating something that may sort of impact both downhole activities and service impacts is or is not within our authority. And I think we've made, you know, conservative choices there, yet still routineing city authority over areas where we have clear and explicit authority, especially with respect to protecting water quality, public health, the environment, safety, welfare and wildlife.
Well, thank you. Okay, I don't mean to dominate this, I'll, I have some more questions for that, maybe other.
I'll just throw in, John, this is, you, you have the expertise that far surpasses all of us in this area and we are so lucky to have you on the board. So you just keep going.
Yeah. Well, I, I love it, but anyway, maybe you, I don't mean to don't, you, you, you guys can go and then I'll come again.
But you, you really have a lot of expertise in this area. I, I recognize that.
Well.
Does anyone else have anything before John takes another? Lisa?
I'm trying to phrase this carefully so you can answer it without me getting you guys in trouble. My sense is, and, and from reading this staff memorandum, there are very few places in the city that would even have geology likely to be consistent with hydraulic fracturing. And that, under the Senate bill that was recently passed, this does a nice job of kind of putting more permanent local protections in place that duplicate or perhaps even improve upon the effects of the moratorium without our having to call it a moratorium and continuously renew it. In other words, it basically shuts down oil and gas within the city. To the extent you can answer that, is that correct?
I don't know that that is the intent behind the regulations. I think we looked at what kind of things the city could enact to protect, particularly where people live or where people are like outsides in some cases, like parks. Obviously because of the density of the city, that makes a lot of places ineligible. And I think there's a lot of, there is some geologic reasons why Boulder may not be one of the top places to drill for oil and gas, you know, like the Wattenberg Field that I showed on that slide is, is largely east of the city. It doesn't mean it's not possible. I mean, obviously there's old wells in Boulder and there has been drilling in the past. But I think we're just trying to, you know, strike a reasonable balance of, of following what our peers are doing to, you know, protect the communities. I, I think we, we are different in Boulder and that it's not like Broomfield or other jurisdictions that have a lot of open lands where you, you would, might see this more. So that's, that's, that was our approach.
Yeah. Ultimately, I'd say our, our goal was to protect the, the public welfare and, and health as much as possible under the regulations that are in place and the authority that we have.
Let me phrase my question in a better way. Um, what's, where? Where where, un- under the proposed language and. Given what we're trying to do to perfect health, safety and public welfare. Where could hydraulic fracturing or other drilling potentially occur? Like, are there any locations that we look at and think, oh, well, theoretically, it could still happen there or or? Would this? Likely preclude most sites or all sites from. From being put into oil and gas production?
I I think the mapping that we've done clearly shows that the vast majority of the city is not eligible. I mean, what the mapping shows. Is that there's really three locations where there could be eligible locations. So. There's a flagpole area that goes east to west that connects. The northern part of Boulder over to Gun Barrel. There are some agricultural sites there that would be eligible. It looks like there's some land. Partly owned by the city and then also owned by IBM up in Gun Barrel. That could be potential sites. There's also some. Kind of fragments of areas along 55th that potentially. Could be eligible. I I think it gets a little bit more complicated when we're talking about the multi-well. Situation where the 2,500 foot setback comes into play because that then eliminates almost. All of them with the exception of that agricultural lands in that flagpole. But we have added an exception where, you know. There could be a multi-well that goes down to 2,000 if they get, if they demonstrate that they're, you know, the impacts are commensurate. So they could go through, but it's kind of like a variance to erect in those those three particular locations.
And then one other question that may be beyond the scope of our conversation tonight. Broadly speaking, and in Colorado, economic forces around natural gas, I mean, is it? Even a good investment at this point? I mean, and when and we when we have all these restrictions around it, I I don't know. I mean, if I were running around trying to develop gas, I'm not sure I would. Go near us with a 10-foot pole. But yeah, I I just wonder what's. What's happening with natural gas? And maybe that's a good question for the consultant we have on, you know, are we seeing a lot of new permits trying to get pulled or is it kind of calming down?
Um, I guess the one thing I can say on that is what we are seeing in Colorado is. In the past year, so actually in the, actually in 2020, there were. Approximately 5,000 less well production facilities in the state than in 2019. So what we are seeing is operators are plugging and abandoning their older wells. And you know what that is in response to, I can't tell you whether that's because of the pandemic or, you know. Economic downturn, price of oil and gas, or the regulatory regime in the state of Colorado as a whole. But that is definitely something that we saw recently with some reports that operators provided to the Air Quality Control Commission. I'd say we're also seeing consolidation in the industry. So smaller companies are getting acquired by larger companies. There is definitely been a trend towards more multi-well facilities, new multi-well facilities being built. And and some of those are being built with the sort of latest technology that includes. Tankless facilities where all of the hydrocarbons are exported, taken offsite via pipeline as opposed to trucks. So there's less emissions associated with transportation and there's also less large emission sources. Storage tanks are really a very primary emission source at the oil and gas site itself. And we're seeing that happen voluntarily by some of the sort of operators here as a way to both. Make their operations more efficient, but also I would say to minimize air air pollution. As I'm sure you know, Boulder and much of the front range is in the Denver metropolitan severe non-attainment area. And so as a result of that, operators do have an incentive to. Take steps voluntarily to reduce their emissions so that they can obtain permits. As minor sources instead of major sources, which a company which require Title V permits, which are much more complex and costly. Than minor source permits.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I'll just say thank you. That was super informative and very helpful. Yeah, I don't want to get too in the weeds on it, you know, but but just I would. Anticipate that as renewables continue to become more and more affordable and as even existing natural gas plants become less and less. Interesting, I I think it's just going to become less interesting for people to even try to develop. Which, you know, it's great for us to put all this in place, but I'm just not sure how many permits we're really going to seek them for.
Hey, anyone else before John takes another crack at the questions? Yeah, Lupita.
Well, going along those lines, I was gonna ask in regards to. How does Colorado compare or even since we're talking about Boulder specifically? How does Boulder compare to other regions in the country? Where they may have had other restrictions and there's been more control over. You know, emissions from, you know, sources like such as this. I know that. The oil and gas industry in Colorado has had a lot of power for a very long time. And so shift in that is not going to be as easy in other places where they don't hold as much power. But the the way that we compare to other places, are we in a good place or are we? Just getting started? What abouts are we compared to other places?
Yeah, so on, from an air quality standpoint. It it might come as a shock to hear this just because the front range ozone problem is terrible and getting worse. But the state has actually been a leader with respect to emission control requirements for oil and gas facilities. Going back to the mid or well, early to 200, 2000, so 2004, when the state first started regulating. Oil and gas sources, but really kind of ramping up significantly as of 2014, when Colorado was the first state in the nation. And and actually preceded the federal EPA in adopting rules that regulate. And restrict methane emissions from oil and gas facilities. So Colorado really just laid the groundwork for other states to follow, including California, who's often the leader with respect to. Environmental regulations, but they actually followed us with respect to adopting rules that limit methane and. Just this week, the federal EPA, well, for the second time, first in 2016, they adopted standards for. New sources that were constructed after 2016 that directly regulated methane. But just this week, for the first time, EPA actually adopted or proposed rather. Rules that apply to existing sources, so ones that exist today. That directly regulate methane. And and again, those rules, both the 2016 EPA rules for new sources. And the rules that were proposed this week for new modified and existing sources. Are modeled very much on the state of Colorado's requirement. So. We we have been a leader at the state level with respect to controlling emissions and then local governments like. Like the city of Boulder and other local governments have had the authority for quite some time to adopt their own. More protective emission control regulation than the state has adopted. And I would say that, you know, a number of local governments who preceded Boulder have really utilized that authority to to improve the state's rules. And become a model, you know, for the state and for the nation. So I'd say it's. You know, it's it's disappointing that we in this in the front range are still experiencing such poor ozone pollution and we really do have a lot more work. To do to reduce ozone precursor emissions from oil and gas sources as well as other sources, but at least. I can say that the state regulations and many of the local regulations that have gone above and beyond the state regulations truly are leaders. Really for the world, quite honestly.
Well, I I think I think you're right about that, the whole issue of methane being very specific to the state, but you know, if we're still dealing with ozone and we know. A lot longer about how difficult it is to control ozone because you have to control the precursors. Then we still have a lot of work to do.
Right.
Other questions? John?
Okay, I know it's getting late, so I just have a couple more here. One is with respect to the the proposed 10-year use review. Expiration. Does that mean that? A a permit would be valid for for the full 10 years, even if they stopped producing after two years?
No, I mean, with any use, if if it's approved through a user view, if they stop operation. For more than one year, it expires. So if they stopped for that amount of time at any point during that 10 years, they would have to come back in to with a new use review before that.
Okay. Good. And then also, I I saw that there is a requirement for insurance coverage. But that's not the same as a bond for potential damages and so on, is it? Or or how how does that compare?
You wanna take that, Hella or Elizabeth?
I'm happy to. So there are specific insurance requirements that are set forth with the specific. Dollar amounts required, but you are right that the a bond to cover. Decommissioning that particular amount hasn't been set specifically in the regulations, rather, it's something that will be determined. Where you should get an application and approve of an application at that time, based on the specifics of the application. So. The number of wells, the location of the wells, you know, factors that 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 directly impact reclamation and abandonment costs. At that time, then this would determine the appropriate bond that would ensure that there are funds sufficient to cover. The abandonment and reclamation, which are the areas the city has control over with respect to authority over. At that point, then the city would determine the specific amount that the operator would have to provide in order to cover those costs.
So I I can just imagine that the operators will complain that the state is. Requiring a bond also and that they'll think that this is some kind of duplication. That's a burden on them. And, you know, probably there won't be anything happening in the city anyway, but is is that a concern that we would need to address?
Well, I guess I would say two things about that. A, other local governments are also requiring that operators provide a surety bond to. Cover to ensure that the operator can comply with their regulations, including any decommissioning and reclamation costs. Secondly, it's it's sort of a new concept with SB 181, but. The local government has its own independent authority to regulate surface impacts related to oil and gas. COGCC does as well, but they have their own independent authorities. So there is. Independent lines of authority for local governments to regulate the same types of impacts that the COGCC regulates. And so pursuant to that, your reclamation requirements may very well differ from. COGCC's reclamation requirements. And so the bond necessary to ensure that the operator fully complies with. Your regulations and fully decommissions and reclaims the site to your standards may indeed be differ be different than. The bond that COGCC would would require.
Okay, well, great. I'm hoping for no orphan wells in the city then. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, then with that, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this. We would love to hear from the public, any comments that you have on on the proposal before us for this ordinance. I see that we have four attendees still hanging in with us here. Does anyone want to raise their hand and address us for three minutes on this on this issue? Lynn? Cindy, I think Lynn can unmute already. Is that correct? There you, there you go. Lynn, you can you can unmute.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to just, I don't see any harm in having. Stricter regulations than the state. Like there might be the complaint that it's duplication or something. I think Boulder should take the lead. And I say that from my 60-degree house. And I am going to use some gas because my feet are freezing cold and this is how it is all winter for me. Because I'm dead, I live here, you know, I live in Colorado. Why should I be heating up my place, you know? And I'm living in this space by myself, so that's even less justifiable. But the the point is, I am using some gas, you know. An on-demand hot water heater. But. At least. When I take my warm shower when this meeting gets over. At least I'll be a little bit warmer and at least my heat was at 56 degrees. Literally at 60 and it's about 50 in the part of my house where I disconnected the electric. Radiate radiator heat because it's so energy consumptive. So I'm doing my part. I don't say this to make any of you feel guilty or anything. I'm just saying it as practical reality. I'm saving everything for my kids because I know. That this climate change issue is going to affect them the most and I don't know what their future holds. Particularly as we grow so much like the the issue earlier tonight with the millennium. So. I just see that. This, the situation just needs to be as as. You know, strong as possible for for getting rid of gas entirely. For the health components of it. I want to get off gas entirely and and I will get off gas entirely when we municipalize. And that will be in 23 or 25 when when our off-ramps for the for Excel happen again. And we can get out of the franchise, then I'll I'll be sticking up solar or I'll be buying, you know, solar gardens as soon as that happens. And and we, there's, gas is just completely archaic. So I hope to make this whole conversation irrelevant. But we have to do it on our own. We cannot do it with Excel Energy and that's. What's going to happen coming up. At least I'm going to try. I still have my sign up. They took the rest of my signs, you know, but they left that one up today. I've had it up since last year since we voted. To continue the franchise. But anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Lynn. You can go a little bit more if you have anything else, otherwise we'll.
No, because my feet are really cold. My gas heated hot water.
All right. Yeah, we weren't, we weren't displaying the timer this time. So, but thank you, Lynn, and I hope your feet warm up. Warmups.
It's the extremities that mostly get affected, you know, I can wear, but it it's tough. Have you ever tried wearing your hat to brush your teeth? Because that's what I have to do. Today, today, it's balmy. It's balmy in my place now.
Well, no, I don't see any other hands up. So last call for comment on this item. All right, well, with that, then I guess I, you know, we covered a lot in the Q and A, of course, because this is a. Item that, you know, we don't all have a lot of expertise on. I do want to say that with the moratorium expiring at the end of the year, it's clear to me that this puts the city in a much legal, much more legally. Defensible space. I think the moratoriums could be challenged in court in a way that when you have your code. Codified in a way that's considered fair and takes into account public health is much more defensible. So. I think this is a wonderful thing to see us do as the moratorium expires. And I see it moving us into a great space. Anyone else want to comment on this or? Or make a motion? John?
I can't see it, but I move to recommend these regulations to council.
I can restate the motion with all the language. Lupita, did you want a second?
Yes, I want a second.
So. Okay, if I just go right to the restatement of the motion, John, with the full language. Plenty, John and has recommended and Lupita has seconded that city. Plenty, um John ha- and has recommended and Lupita has seconded that uh City Council Adopt Ordinance eighty-five fourteen amending Title Nine Land Use Code to add new conditional use standards related to oil and gas operations. Any more discussion on this before we go up for a vote? All right, so I'm gonna do a roll call on this. If you could unmute yourselves on this one, uh I'll go to Peter first.
Hi.
Georgie?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Lupita?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
And John?
Hi.
And I vote aye. So that's a unanimous vote. Thank you so much, and uh great work, Carl and Elizabeth. Awesome. Okay, well, that was our final public hearing item of the night. Uh so now we'll move on to matters uh for the Board, uh Planning Director and City Attorney. Um for the Board, um I think that the most important thing for us to do is just quickly discuss the uh end of year letter. Uh I uh resent uh the October fourteenth um request that Cindy had forwarded to us uh uh about the format of what's being requested of us. Uh so hopefully can have been able to look at that again. Um it, they're kind of asking us to focus on a single work plan item uh that we think is the highest priority, uh so we'll have to think about how we work around that structure. Uh we have a um meeting set up for November twelfth uh to do some drafting. And Sarah and Lupita have kindly agreed to uh kind of take the leadership. I um we've we've kind of not had the chair be the one who kind of drives the whiteboarding and everything, which I think is great. Uh I did it last year on on the first pass. Uh so um Sarah and Lupita, I'll just hand it over to you to comment on anything you would like to with regards to the November twelfth meeting, any prep you'd like us to do, and any thoughts you have on how we might make progress on this.
Well, Lupita and I did not get a chance to talk. Uh she's been very, very busy, and so this is our, we're talking now.
Okay.
Um so uh I think that basically what would be helpful, I think, is just to quickly lay out what we do know, which is um we're meeting on the twelfth. Um David and and the staff have been kind enough to say they would manage the technology so that Lupita and I can facilitate and take notes or or, you know, whatever. Um uh the last year, so that's that's the basic uh framework. Last year's letter, which we all got a copy of, uh basically, most of it is still, you know, extent um and has not been acted on. Um but David last year had sent out three questions for us to do some thinking about. Um and they they are, what recent, I think it's the same questions that are in the letter, right, David? What recent decisions changed to code? Or planning trend did you see as particularly positive? Which ones did you see as particularly negative? And then the, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the question while we're talking. And the question three is, what should the city of Boulder's planning priorities be in twenty twenty-one? And those were really helpful questions for each of us to think about and then bring uh sh- share before the meeting and then bring us talking, start places to start talking um about at the meeting and then go use the mural technology to you know, try to whiteboard uh our priorities and put stickers on to see who, what priorities we did or didn't like. So I, if that's a, I guess what I'm putting out there and Lupita at, you know, whatever you would like to put out there. Do we wanna sort of use just that same framework, um both as a idea generator in the week before the meeting um and at the meeting? Just a thought.
I sort of like that. I, you know, I was gonna suggest we start with what we had last year and see just like you said, you know, things that have not acted on, are they even worth keeping? Or are there something that became more present, or if it's something that's still important and yet not done, so how can we redouble? Um I guess the urgency of it to make sure that this time around does not get left behind. I I I don't know, maybe that that will be one way. Um I like to hear what all the people are thinking, because if we were to revisit those those are are um I guess, were recommendations. Um then we we have the place to start, and we can quickly zero in or discard things. Do you?
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable just kind of mentioning those things and maybe get a little bit of a feedback or, because we can get that started then? Or even you and I can just go one first pass at it. I just would like to know what the temperature of the board is with regards to those topics we covered last year.
Yeah, so I'll I'll just quickly, the items that we had down. I'll I'll focus on the um what should the city of Boulder's planning priorities be in twenty twenty-one? Uh under equity, we had um notification for proposed projects to include all all residents. Um is CIP procurement of goods and services uh from local minority-owned, women-owned and disadvantaged business enterprises, which I actually think was included in the um racial equity plan, yeah?
Yes, it was, but we asked for um a a a update on that. Uh but you're right, it it has been addressed, so we just are waiting for an update.
Okay, and then moderate, uh I'm sorry, moderate the current trend towards upscale housing and encourage development of affordable for-sale housing to help low-income and moderate-income residents build equity and intergenerational wealth. Protect industrial land zoning, attract and retain businesses that make and fix things to support the city's sustainability and resilience. Um inject rigor into the community benefits and affordable commercial space discussion. So that's also it's not that it's completed, it's that it's gone back to the drawing board. And then under innovation, we had complete use table and code updates and examine further land use changes that will generate more affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. Prioritize a neighborhood infill pilot project. Employ area or sub-community planning to cultivate meaningful, effective meaningful and effective community engagement and coherent planning in East Boulder, Gun Barrel and the Diagonal Plaza. So I guess the question is, do you, is that list a place we could start from if if we use that?
Yeah, here here's what, I I think that is a really good list. Um and then we could um before, like, the eleventh, if people have additional ideas uh to throw those out, you know, to send those to Cindy, and then um if you'd like, we could have those kind of pre-populated on the on the mural in sticky notes for for the twelfth. Um but it but um again, if you read the letter, they're pretty specific that they want us to come up with one work item that we really want. So uh so I think it's gonna be interesting to see if we can take that and then like talk about, well, which one do we wanna highlight the most, even if we misbehave and enumerate a whole bunch of other stuff after that? I don't know.
Uh yeah, I I have an idea, because I sit on the Housing Advisory Board, and they're going through that letter reduction as well. And um it it came up in the conversation about, you know, what the the planning board is doing with regards to something like this letter, and I I suggest that it would be good to kind of coordinate so that if we were to, you know, get the our point across is a particular topic, a particular um thing that we wanna get worked out, it will be uh more present if we have more than one board raising it. So maybe that will be one thing that we can kind of check uh on um to see if if any of those arts kind of match with theirs.
It's an interesting idea.
Uh I I was gonna say also, you know, when you, when you go from like a list of, I don't know, ten items and you get maybe one or two worked on, and then you decide to go to one item, what happens when you don't do that one? Do we fail you?
Well, they've they kind of um also, um if you read that email, there, there's gonna be this iterative uh approach that after the retreat um they want to loop back with each board to to kind of discuss how how the retreat went and how our our priority fell out. So there should be follow-up, it sounds like, right? I I have to read the letter to see exact, or that email again, to see exactly how that looks, but.
The threat or a promise of theirs.
Yeah, it's a promise. Yeah.
So one last point with regards to the Housing Advisory Board. I know the one important point that we've been covering quite a bit is uh the whole issue of homelessness and um, you know, how to address it, even, you know quite a bit of work with them, but one of our members, Jax, um uh looking into uh small housing. Um and and so I know it's not in our list, but uh it will certainly be an important thing because it's an increasing problem. And, you know, affordable housing is sort of connected to that. If we were able to address those problems better, um I guess we would do better. I don't know. I just throw it in there cuz it wasn't on our list.
Well, it's um maybe, I don't think we wanna have our conversation now.
No.
This is, this is more of a conversation.
Just to get your mind a little wet so that you can dream about it and think about it on your.
Well, actually, um and and that that would be the kind of thing that would be really helpful. Um if if people could come up with their ideas to send to Cindy before the meeting in addition to things that are that we would propose last year, we could have all those kind of like we did last year in a pre-populated on the screen, so we can start to move them around and comment on them. So that would be a good one, Lupita. Um uh uh as well as any other thoughts that people have of of uh work plan items.
So, okay, so what I'm hearing is uh between now and next Thursday, everybody take a look at last year's letter and also the request from Plan from Council. Um and uh send send some notes to Cindy about uh what in the exist, what was in our letter last year that didn't get done that you feel should, is still a priority? And it can be one thing, it can be ten things, it doesn't really matter. And then anything else that you feel is important um that um either we've brought up, whether it's homelessness or missing middle housing or for-sale housing or area planning or tran- the intersection of transportation and development, whatever it might be. Um and uh get that to Cindy by Thursday, and then that'll, then we'll already have some sort of materials, sort of up on up on the uh the whiteboard. Um and maybe, David, since I don't really quite understand how um mural works, is that something that can already be placed up on the whiteboard before our meeting starts? So that we don't have to spend a ton of time on the technology of it?
Yeah, actually, that's what we did last time, I believe. I can't remember, sure. But I think that what happened was everybody sent their stuff into Cindy, and then I put up color-coded by board member each post-it, you know, that with the board members' comments, and then we kind of put them into categories and lumped them together. And then I had a mechanism by which you could vote on them. Uh so uh, I mean if if you want to think about how, okay, so um yeah, I would um and I'll work with Charles on this, cuz Charles is also volunteered to help with the mural, so so I I may not actually be moving stuff around. Charles and I are gonna talk about it, but uh but I just wanna kind of be like the technical support for y'all uh so that you don't have to worry about. But yeah, if I would basically take everything that you send to Cindy and put it on little post-its that we can then categorize. Uh and um I actually went in, but Cindy sent up, set up a mural already for us. Right now, it has two sections. One is, what do we think the highest priority thing is, and what else do we think we wanna bring up in the letter? So we could kind of like move them into those categories as we talk about it.
And Cindy, if we get you stuff by Thursday morning, is that enough time for you?
Yeah, Thursday's actually a vacation day. The office isn't open, so working Thursday, but
So Wednesday.
Wednesday would be best.
All right, then Wednesday it is.
Now let's do Wednesday, and then I'll have a date to uh to play around with the mural again. Um do you have an idea of how, okay, so we certainly, certainly I can get all the ideas onto post-its on a mural, no problem. Um but I I guess um um Sarah and Lupita, I'd be interested, is there additional ways that you'd like it set up that we could that would make it easy for us to categorize and stuff? Would you like a voting mechanism or a thumbs up, thumbs down mechanism on mural or something? Or or should we just talk through it and figure it out?
Um do you, I I don't know the ans- I don't have an answer to that. I just remember that last year we did like um little
Little dots.
Thoughts to give a sense of where there was a lot of support.
And that was sort of like, that that was sort of like the ranking, you know, how 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 many people agree that this is important. In some cases, we we, you know, we have one person who voted it was important uh versus multiple, and that helps because, you know, um they're all good ideas, it's just that some of them are a little bit more um across the board. Everybody agrees that this is um high, high um high need. I I I just wanna, I want comment because I ju- it just dawned on me that, you know, I made a comment about, you know, how we didn't, maybe didn't get a whole much done, but remember, this was a terrible year. And uh and and not only just because of the pandemic, but we had our own ima- in unimaginable tragedy which put our city council in an absolutely terrible position, and the same thing with the city when they were already stressed. So thinking back, I feel kind of bad to even make any comments because it was absolutely the most terrible period our city has had in a long time. So um I think, considering everything that we went through, um you know, we should be glad that we got something done, and we're still here trying to serve the city.
Oh, and by the way, I was told that the use table, uh we can consider that on the work plan already, so we don't have to worry about putting that on. Uh but uh and so, but yeah, Lupita, that's so true, and um I don't thi- I think that um last year at the retreat, it was pretty obvious that it was hard to add things to the work plan. That may not be the case this year, because we are starting to see new staff getting hired or plans to hire new staff, so um I don't know if Jacob wants to say anything on on that to give us a little pep talk, but I I think that uh it might be a little bit more uh rosy picture in terms of getting stuff on than it was last year.
Well, first of all, um thanks, everyone. Listening intently to this discussion. Uh there's a lot that can be said i- in regards to this, and I think that the first piece of it is city council's request. Council's request, I think, is um is a thoughtful one, that they are asking all of the boards to send them a work plan item. Because I think that they've looked at the past year, and they've seen that the scattershot approach has not yielded the result that we all want, and in the effort to um create a highly effective government, we wanna be judicious about our requests. What they have not done, what council has not done, is um limited your or other board's ability to send um messages about approach, direction, um the overall philosophical uh way that we are going about our work or any other message that you might want to send to the council. They have not, you know, they're not saying for you to um hold back in that regard. They're just saying be judicious about your request for the work plan, which to me is um prudent. And in terms of capacity, citywide, I think we are still kind of on our heels. And from our standpoint, we are in work planning now. Department-wide, we have more items on the list than we can accomplish, and we're gonna be judiciously looking at what we can pace what we can not do in order to deliver an effective work plan for the the coming year. We have more positions to hire that are budgeted. They will be fully budgeted by January of twenty twenty-two. And the goal would be to have those positions hired and trained by March of twenty twenty-two. So going into the next year, we're optimistic that by Q two of next year we'll be at a more fully-staffed department, more capable of delivering um our work. So it's a little bit of a long-winded answer. I guess what I would say is that I'm cautiously optimistic that we're gonna be able to deliver more work, that we're gonna be able to follow through on council's priority items and deliver our core services. But we're not gonna have that right out of the gate, you know, it'll be Q two before we're fully staffed and and ready to roll. So I like council's request. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration of the things that you put through, and we obviously want to And we obviously want to be responsive to the needs of the community. To your needs and the needs of council. And I think the best way to do that. It's going to be by limiting our requests and making sure that they really count. I'd rather get a few things done well than drop the ball on on everything. And I think that's what we can realistically deliver. So it's kind of some generalizations, but. I don't think that we're back to pre-pandemic levels of productivity or staff levels, frankly. But we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to be on much better footing next year by the middle of the year. So that's where we are, kind of a long-winded answer, but appreciate all of your attentiveness and and I appreciate your your. Thoughtfulness, you know, about engaging us and engaging council on the work plan. I'd also just say, as we get into this. We are, last thing I'll say, we are just now forming up our own work plan internally, bringing items forward from each division in order to prioritize. And we will be prepared to discuss in more detail. The capacity and the things that we are hoping to bring forward to complete our work from this past year. So we'd be prepared for a more robust discussion going forward after this meeting. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks for acting, Dave.
Thank you.
Can I just say something in response? So Jacob, I really appreciate you bringing up the idea that. That we're not limited in sharing some thoughts that we might have about. Approach, philosophy, capacity, governance. Because I I do think that, at least I I can think off the top of my head of a couple of things that that are not about. Work plan items but about process. That are worth, from my perspective, I want to put on paper and have a robust discussion around on on next Friday. So let's add that to the list of things to share in the, whatever you send to to. To Cindy, if you have things that fall into that category of not a work item, but sort of a process item or a. Concern that may be uncategorizable, but is on the on the top of your head and you as something that top of your brain and something you want to share.
Well, thank you for that, Sarah. What what I have heard from this past council is that. They are in a respectful position. They want to listen to the boards. They want to listen to the staff. They want to listen to the community. They are in a position where they want to understand the issues that affect us and most effectively appropriate their their resources to meet those needs. That's what I've heard. So council certainly not looking to limit your your ability to send a message about what we are doing as a community. I think that their request was just limit your work plan because we have limited resource and that's pretty common sense. So I hear you and we will, we will certainly. Think on that and bring forward any of the specific directions that we think are worthy of being elevated. Thanks for your consideration.
Great. Well, given that, I think, you know, what I've heard then from this discussion is that. Is Sarah, and Lupita, that it would make sense to ask the board to send things in. Somewhere between two and three categories for next Wednesday. Did you want to kind of huddle on what we just did, the two of you and kind of send us, send us the those three categories? Maybe within the next couple of days and then and that would give you a little more time to think about what what they might look like. What what I generally heard was, what are the, what do you think the candidates are for the highest work plan item? What are other things we should be cognizant of and what are some ways that we do things or processy kinds of things that the city does that? Should be under scrutiny, but I I don't know exactly how to phrase all those things. But but it might be nice to have categories.
Lupita, are you are you available tomorrow? Lupita?
I was checking my schedule. Actually, I was thinking, maybe we could meet after mass on Sunday. She just happens to live right next door to my 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 place of worship. So it's very convenient when she happens to be around. But if not tomorrow, let me double check, because there is an event at CU. But I think the main event is on Saturday, but the main event tomorrow is in the evening, so I should be okay.
Okay, why don't I do this? Why don't I send you a draft email? You give me your feedback and then if it's okay, once we finalize it, then I'll send it out to everybody.
Sounds good.
That's great. And then Cindy, oh, if if we put this then on the mural in advance of the meeting. Is it okay if we share that mural with the entire board like on Wednesday night? So they have a, the board has a couple of days to look at it or through open meetings, is that kind of? Difficult because the public can't see it until the meeting? It's kind of like.
I'm going to defer to Hella on that one.
You want to create the mural before the meeting?
Yeah, the mural actually is created. It just doesn't have anything on it. But if we started to put these ideas on the mural, is it okay to share that? The thing is, if you send the link out to the. If you display it during the meeting, that's great because the public gets to see it. But if we send it out in advance of the meeting, then really only the people who can go on and play with it can see it. Is that kind of a violation because the meeting hasn't started yet? I don't know how that works.
And everybody send something to Sarah. No, to Cindy.
To Cindy. And she'll and she'll share it with those of us who are going to then put it on the mural.
If we not have any discussion about it, it's just showing. I I will think that should be okay, shouldn't it?
Yeah, if no discussion starts about it, but there there shouldn't be, three shouldn't be discussing it either in creating the mural.
No, so it's just to share it, but there's no discussion until we come to the meeting.
Yeah, could Cindy just prepare it and share it?
Let's think of it this way, there's going to be three categories. The categories will have names. We don't know yet quite what they are. Everyone try to put their ideas into those categories so that what we send to Cindy is very easy to throw up. I mean, I know it takes time, but it's easy to throw up on on mural in those three categories. And then we don't, none of us look at it. I wouldn't even, I would suggest not sharing it before the meeting. So that.
Okay, yeah, then. Yeah, then maybe I should, yeah, I think that I was trying to, since I played with mural last year, help. But maybe it's best if I don't, because then three board members will have touched these things in advance. So if they go to Cindy, maybe Cindy, you and Charles could just make sure that those turn into post-its on the mural.
Yeah, sure.
Meeting, and I promise not to look at it until we start.
Okay, so yeah, everyone send me. Well, send me the three categories by Wednesday and I'll get it up there and have it ready for Friday morning.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right, then our work here is done.
That's that. So, okay, any other matters from the planning board? John?
Yeah, I can I can just say I showed up at the city council meeting last week. And it was interesting, perhaps. If Charles might be able to give a more objective review of what actually happened there. But I I presented the. The planning board concerns, which, you know, covered a wide range. And it was interesting because the Parks and Rec Board had, were unanimously. Wanted to move forward with the restaurant and with the regulations. So council split the baby, basically, and added a few conditions and moved forward. But Charles, maybe you want to describe in greater detail what the outcome was.
But you're muted.
Muted. Oh, you're muted.
He can't speak of it out ever again.
That's that's a pretty accurate summary, John. I have to go back and look at, you know, what the specific conditions were. Third reading is scheduled for. This Tuesday night, the ninth, my consent agenda. But if folks are interested in the specific language that was added, I can go ahead and send that out.
I I think I remember it pretty well. It was in addition to the limited use requirements and it requires. Prab, who is involved in these approvals and when council is involved as well to consider. The land use. Impacts on the neighboring properties and on wildlife resources and the environment when making a decision on these.
And I had thought there was going to be some additional consideration of primary uses versus. Auxiliary uses. On the three parks. That was my impression anyway, but.
I think there was an additional. Task for staff to bring back an ordinance that would make council. But require currently. Only leases that are three years or longer require council approval. So one of the other things that council directed staff to do is to bring back an ordinance that changes that. So that council would always be involved in the approval of a lease like this. But I I don't know that there was, I I actually, I think I'm remembering now, John. I think that there was direction that we check in on. On the uses, primary and accessory as part of the use table project, which is coming up.
I actually had a question, John and Charles and Hella. Which was, as I read the language that was. Drafted for Mary Young. About the. The review, the Prab review. It kind of read like Prab was going to be reviewing Prab's own decision. And maybe that's not what was intended, but it it wasn't clear at all to me who actually or what entity. Would be responsible for evaluating the. The impact on wildlife and neighboring. Properties. I mean, it did, it sort of sounded like it was. Prab, Prab was going to say, I think it's a good idea and so Prab, you should vote for that. Like it was, it just didn't seem like there was a lot of clarity on who would be doing that impact research or study.
I think the intent was for those two approval bodies to have to consider those impacts before they approve a lease.
So what are the, but does there need to be criteria to consider those impacts? There's a need to be a study to know what the impacts are or is it just saying? I don't think there are big impacts or I think there are big impact. It just wasn't clear to me like, what's the, what's the process infrastructure for reaching that decision?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there aren't any application criteria associated with that. It's something that that Prab could. Or that the Parks Department can do by itself or that they can ask. The LSC to provide that they provide an analysis. The criteria are just that. What was written in there and it's actually pretty similar to what the use review criteria are, except that we also added. The impacts to the wildlife and environment because that was something that you guys discussed and were concerned about. And it's not something that's directly addressed in the use review criteria because. We're usually in a more urban environment than there. But the language was borrowed from some of the use review criteria.
Right, Hella, wasn't it something along the lines that. That the use has to be reasonably compatible and has negative, minimal negative impacts on nature and the surrounding area. So it was something along those lines and that was the finding that Prab would have to make if I wasn't mistaken.
Yes, that's correct. Thanks for looking that up.
So it still seems like, I mean, it just still seems like that's vague. I mean, a lot of the stuff we deal with is vague. So.
It's discretionary, yeah.
It's very discretionary and and given that Prab now has, anyways, it doesn't matter. So that's helpful. Thank you for clarifying that.
All right, yeah, thanks. And thanks, John, for representing Planning Board at that. Both I and Peter were out of town and we were going around and I. You were the, you were the right person to represent us on that.
Worked out fine, so thank you.
We'll give you a park ranger jacket next time. Send you an ambush like that.
You get the extra three minutes from the, from the public speakers tonight who finished before they used up all their minutes.
I didn't realize we had, what what were they, credits or? It's that extra credit.
Like figure out a way to get some Halloween candy.
I was tickled by that. Okay, any other matters from the planning board? Okay, planning director. Jacob, Charles, anything?
Negative, nothing additional this evening. Thanks for the great meeting. Much appreciated.
Anything, any, anything with regards to, okay, I guess I heard that in-person meetings really aren't. Something that we can request at this point, but I I feel like we're we're getting to the point where there might be some decisions around. Well, if you're 95% vaccinated or or willing to do a hybrid meeting, that we might be able to consider something like that. But is that still something that isn't ready for discussion?
Not really yet.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything yet, so.
Yeah, actually, I I'll just update briefly. We did have a meeting of city staff leadership today and. We received the discouraging news that in fact we are currently in another COVID surge. That that we have additional sort of orders from regional health, you know, authorities to. Continue all the same measures and try to limit people who are coming into medical facilities. So until we receive word that that's not the case, we're going to remain business as usual. And I was even not aware of that, but for the moment, remaining virtual and waiting again until health measures are are more evident that we're able to meet in person.
All right, Lisa?
Yeah, I was just going to say on the medical front, we're on. Full transfer status, which means you could be transferred from any hospital in the state without your consent purely. Based on how they need to free beds and they can move you to a step down, step down facility again without you signing off and being stepped down. And next step up is crisis standards of care, which means if we think you're not going to make it, you don't get an ICU bed. So it's not time to be in person yet, but I hope soon.
All right.
About that because I think there's only, there's only a few states now that are in the situation, Colorado is one of them. But also another thing that I heard is that regarding the transfers, that we may be receiving those people that are. In other parts of the state that refuse to take the vaccination, but somehow we're going to pay the price because we're the ones who have the beds now. So there will be some education to be done and so hopefully that we can finally get out of this one. Let's hope for the best.
Well, keep, keep, everybody, keep up the vigilance. I know that it's possible to get your third dose. I got mine.
Tomorrow.
Even though I'm not quite 65 years old.
How do you do that? Because I went, I tried to get mine and they wouldn't give it to me.
Tomorrow.
They're like, are you 65? I was like, no.
I got mine, Sarah, so you can totally get yours.
But the Board of Health told me I'm eligible, but too bad not, you know.
I'm getting mine tomorrow.
Go to Farmica.
You just, all right, well, that's outside our scope, but good luck with the third dose. All right, and I guess that was it from the, from your side, Jacob. Nothing else from planning director?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thanks so much. Hella, anything from your side?
Nothing for me.
Lori? Nothing. Okay, I won't make you unmute. So Cindy, calendar check.
Yes, calendar check. So of course we have a meeting on the 12th, which is a Friday from nine to 11. And then on the 18th, we only have one public hearing scheduled at this time. We did have two, but now we have one. On the 18th and Sarah, you told me you were going to be out.
That's correct.
Okay. Excuse me. December 2nd at this time, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Charles. I don't have anything for December 2nd.
We don't, but we likely will. And if we could just roll back to the 18th. The only item we have scheduled for that evening is the discussion of the actual proposed ordinance for the site review criteria update. So we wanted to just have one item so that the board could have a. Robust discussion around that.
Sounds good.
Okay, and then.
We will likely have an item on the second and as well as an item on the 16th of December.
If the second item's short, I I wouldn't mind knocking it off on the 18th, but I know. Yeah, anyway, I'll be calling in from Cairo if if we do it on the second. I'll be calling in from Cairo if if we do it on the second.
Well, you could also just not, you could also not participate.
I could miss a meeting.
You can miss a meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll consider that. It'll be like the day I leave Cairo, so I can just get back on Colorado time and then sleep on the plane, but we'll see. Yep.
I have high hopes that you'll have like actual pyramids behind you, so.
These things are too tall, I'll tell you what. I don't like their shape.
Does not meet the height limit.
Well, good. All right, well, um, I guess that's it. Any, any debrief? Uh, I thought the meeting today was quite, quite uh nice. Thank you all for participating so well. Any, any debrief items, how things went today?
I actually have a, 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 an item I want to put on the table, not for discussion, but just to put on the table. The fact that we are getting so many um for-profit student housing proposals, it strikes me that it might be worthwhile for planning to think about whether there needs to be a particular set of of um use requirements, the way there are for dormitories, fraternities and sororities. Um, it just strikes me like this is a whole new um uh use, not, it's not, it's not a new use, but it's an expanding use. And I just wonder if it's worth, over time, thinking about uh how how the city might want to um accommodate and and manage that re- that this emerging type of use.
Sounds like a wonderful suggestion for council's work plan. It might not be your one, but it sounds like a wonderful suggestion. Um, noted, Sarah, and uh we we hear that loud and clear, and that's something that I think um is evident in college towns across the country, especially ours, um, to think of a wonderful suggestion.
Lisa?
Yeah, and I I don't want to keep this up too late, but just off Sarah's um comment, it reminds me of the, something that we bring up frequently um with other site review. And I don't know how time consumed this would be if you can hire an outside consultant or something, but we often ask about what's happening in terms of losing industrial. Um, you know, uses in industrial space, and it's kind of that same thing where it's not necessarily about the individual site or whether like this is an appropriate application, but like lacking that full picture of like, how much have we lost? How much do we still have? Like, what does this mean? What category of industrial is this then that we're getting rid of? And it makes it really hard for me to like understand how I fit in. I think it's the same thing with the student housing, you know, how rapidly is it growing? How much of it is luxury? Where is it cited? Um, what's happening to CU enrollment, you know, because again, you know, you see one individual plan, you say, oh yeah, this looks good, great, we need more student housing, cool. Takes pressure maybe off of, you know, single family. Um, eh, but yeah, I ju- I don't really have a sense of like what's happening in a big picture. That'd be really useful.
And I, and that um triggers me to remind us that um Cindy uh sent out um the last three uh letters. I I don't know if I mentioned that uh for us to look at in helping us uh for next Wednesday. Um, I think that that industrial question was sort of formulated in our uh, in our suggestions last year um and and studies like that. So uh, yeah, that, I, so those are all good, good possibilities. Yep.
Well, uh, um, Charles may uh may be thinking this already. We are currently assessing an analysis of industrial lands for the next year's work plan. Just wanted to let you all know that, that is, it's in the hopper for us to assess our capacity to deliver it. Um, just want to let you know that we he- we did hear that last year and that has been factored in. And also hear your suggestions about student housing as well. Um, I think that's something that, again, if we have the ability, any number of staff planners would be thrilled to dig into a project of that type. So yeah, um, just want to acknowledge that. We hear it loud and clear.
Good for fun.
The industrial land survey is something we knew that we had to do um at very least for the um East Boulder sub area um as we wrap up that planning effort to really understand the market dynamic. But um I think there's a lot of wisdom based on conversations we've had over the course of the past two years um about industrial lands in the whole city of comprehensively. So I think that's the way we'd want to come at it.
Great. Okay, well, with that, are we ready to adjourn? Everybody set? Okay, well, thanks so much. I'm looking forward to seeing everybody in our special meeting next Friday and good luck putting together your input. All right, thanks so much.
Great night.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.